Proud and happy to host the Student of the Month event. Students are our future and we need to acknowledge not only our students but our teachers and parents for all they do to bring success for each and every one of our students. With that said, I'm going to come down and announce, do you want to help me Commissioner Campbell? Please. The Students of the Month. Hensley Bowers from Browning Pierce Elementary. Judah Perdue from Children's Reading Center Child's School. Zain LeBlanc from Hillcrest Academy. Pritchett from James A. Long. Mason Tuton from Kelly Smith Elementary. Malik Hammon from Mellon Learning Center Pre-2K. Carolyn Christensen from Mellon Learning Center K-12.
Thank you, congratulations.
Gabby Navarro from Mosley Elementary. Kayden Major from Putnam Academy of the Arts and Sciences. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City of Palatka City Commission meeting for October 26, 2023. We're going to call this meeting to order, starting with an invocation by Pastor Mulberry.
Father, we thank you again for how you have blessed us throughout the day. You've allowed us to come together once again, and we say thank you. We praise you and we give you glory for all your many blessings. Pray, God, that you look on us now and that you will bless this meeting tonight as we come to do the business for the city. We ask for your divine guidance and your wisdom in all that we do. Keep us civil in this place, God, and keep us reminded of who we represent. It is so in Jesus's name, amen.
Please, Ms. Krantz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Tammy McCaskill is not present for the record. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones. Commissioner Rufus Borum. Mayor Robbie Correa.
Present.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum in the chambers.
Thank you. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from October 12, 2023?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from meeting October 12, 2023.
Second. The motion is second. All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you. We're going on to public recognitions presentations. First presentation is City Youth Ambassadors. Ms. Krantz. Commissioner Campbell, too. Ms. Krantz. Ms. Krantz, okay.
Madam Mayor, thank you and the Commission again for allowing me to serve as the city's Youth Ambassador Program Coordinator. The Youth Ambassadors recently got to celebrate Florida City Government Week. We were hosted for our monthly meeting by Brett Dennis of the Palatka Gas Authority, and all of our youth got to learn more about the gas in our city. On top of that, each of the youth were allowed an opportunity to shadow a department head. Ms. Uma Thai, who is a foreign exchange student, got to, and the Youth Ambassador, got to shadow me. So I'm, I've not heard what she's going to say, so I'm going to turn it over to her. Ms. Uma Thai.
Hi. Hi. I'm, I'm the Year's Ambassador this year, and also, my name is Uma. I'm the Year's Ambassador this year of Palatka, and also, I'm an exchange student from Taiwan to here this year. I'm 16 and I'm from Palatka High School. And today, the presentation I'm going to do about is the two big events I have attended as an Year's Ambassador for the past week. First, I want to talk about what I learned from the first meeting of the Palatka Gas Authority. It's really cool to see that I find out most of the building in Palatka or in America is so different from Taiwan. It's that the buildings are so elegant and it's, it looks like even designed, which is so different. I see at the first of the GPA Palatka Gas Authority. And I want to talk, introduce about the process of the meeting that day. First, we do the self-introduction. I recently do a lot. And then there's a presentation of Mr. Dennis. And the next thing we do is the Q and A, which I like that process is because we can ask questions and he will answer us. And then there's, and we have the discuss of community service discussed of Year's Ambassador, which you guys can look forward. And also, we, I choose the department to shadow on that day. And I want to share you guys the things I learned that day because I think it is important for people to know about what GPA talked, PGA talked to me. It's like, we discuss about when to call 811, which you can contact with PGA or... And it's like, when you find out your gas is leak, what to find our gases leak. What I learned on that day is when you see the water bubbling or building dirt, when you hear the, the hushing or rolling noise, or when you smell the rotten eggs, which you can find out that this, these things you see, you saw or hear is the thing you can like find out, or maybe your gas is leak. Okay, so when you find out your gas is leak, you're going to call 811. But there's a problem that you're not going to call right there because, like, we know that we cannot switch on the Alana Tronics things, or we cannot turn on a light or start any vehicle. I think people know that. But actually, you cannot use the phone when you find out your gas is leak. It may be caused a big bomb or big fire or something, which is so dangerous. I, I, this is the one I want to share, which I learned very important on that day. And then I also like asked some question about the PGA on that day because I want to know there's different, maybe different from Taiwan and which I learned a lot. Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Okay, next I want to talk about is what I learned from the government week, which I choose the City Hall Clerk Sunny to shadow. I choose this department is because my mom also worked for the government, which is like management, the tax from the country. So I want to kind of compare the differences and I want to know what is the difference and what to, what do in as the City Hall Clerk? Like, we've, we spent, we spent October 19th, five hour together, and I got to know what she do for work. And also, she give me a tour of City Hall. It's so different, as I think, because I thought at City Clerk is like talking to people, but actually, it's so, it's much complicated this, I thought. It's not, the single work is too hard or something. It's like, there's so many impact things to do, like announcement from the City Hall, manage, manage the city website, also have to contact people working in City Hall, have to listen to people request, which what I saw on that day is like, people get into the City Hall and ask question to Sunny, and she just solved the problem for them, which she did a great job to me, and do some paperwork, which we do together. And also, like, prepare for today's commission meeting. It's so many impacts. But what I see are after I, after the shadowing, I organized the notes I do on that day, and I find out that, I think the skill to be a city clerk, when I see is not, is, is not just simple one thing. You have to have the time management skill. You have to have a composureally because there are so many things like in emergency or in time limits. And also, after she introduced her, my, introduced her job to me on that day, she give me the City Hall tour. In Taiwan, because I live in city, I live in city Taipei, I don't really have a big chance to get into the government that close. So I'm so happy to get this chance. And so, we see the City Hall tour around. And what I found out and I want to share with you guys is, first, again, the building are, is pretty and is decidedly is just different from Taiwan. In Taiwan, we all are big buildings. Also, there are so many trace of history. Like, I heard of this building used to be the post office. So I got to see the cat, catwalk on, on top, which is like spied on the staffs working. So I never think of there is a cat, a catwalk on it. And then I saw the printer machine at the, on the, another building. It's like so many history trace looks like they cost a lot, but they just put it here. But it's so cool, like seeing history just in front of me. I got, never have that chance. Oh, also, the city law. Like, I see the handwriting just at 1915 in the, in the room which puts the law. Wow, just so cool. Okay. Okay. And also, I found out the big difference from Taiwan, which I want to share is like, in Taiwan, the City Hall, we have to have a really, really complicated process to get into the people who works inside. Like, we don't have chance to just get inside and talk to the city clerk. We don't even have a city clerk. Yeah. So those are the thing I think is really interesting and really fun to share with you guys, which is just so different from my home country and also like so lucky to get this chance to being a Year's Ambassador. I'm look for the rest of the, the rest of the event of a Year's Ambassador, and I hope to share with you guys next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, recognition life-saving actions by a citizen. Chief Taylor.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, citizens, visitors. On September 9, 2023, approximately 8:40 in the morning, Mr. Raleigh Paul was assisting a motorist change their tire near the bridge in East Palatka when a single car accident occurred at the foot of the bridge. Combat car had slammed into a concrete power pole. The damage was extensive, and a fire immediately began burning under the hood of the vehicle. Mr. Paul witnessed the accident and the subsequent fire, jumped into action, immediately trying to free the seriously injured driver from entrapment. He opened the door, unsure of how to proceed, with concerns for further injury. He then focused on the young girl in the rear passenger seat. Mr. Paul then pulled the young girl out of the car and handed her off to a lady who monitored the child until emergency services arrived. Mr. Paul then ran back to his truck, grabbed two fire extinguishers, which he immediately deployed to protect the driver until the arrival of engine two. The Black Fire Department County EMS crews completely extinguished the fire, packaged the driver and child for transport to the emergency department. Raleigh's quick decisive actions may have saved a life that day. With no regard for his own safety, Mr. Paul protected unknown citizens until more resources could arrive. The Fire Department, Police Department EMS did a great job removing and transporting the patients. But without the actions of Mr. Paul, the outcomes may have been very different. I'd like to thank Mr. Paul for taking life-saving actions to protect two people he did not know. Whether knowingly or not, he made a substantial contribution to our community and the safety of a small family who had been severely injured in an accident. We encourage all citizens to keep fire extinguisher in their vehicles for just such a situation. A fire, a fire that without a quick response of a citizen may result in the burn injuries or death on top of the already severe injuries. Mr. Paul, thank you for all you have done. Good luck to you and all your future endeavors. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paul. Next, introduction of new employees, Ms. Jones. Chief Shaw, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I would just like to take this opportunity to just briefly give you a list of the names of employees that I have not recognized publicly that have become employees of the City of Palatka. We have Mr. Terrence Buford, which is a parks laborer in our Public Works Department. Michelle Brown, our planning clerk here in City Hall. Our planner one, Mr. Casey Chee. Michael Richardson, which is at our wastewater treatment plan, our operator trainee. Ryan Swilly, our water and sewer as a maintenance trainee. And we have our John Varela in our sanitation department as a sanitation equipment driver. And we got George Lopez, which is a, holds a dual role of a refuse collector slash swing driver. We also have Jade Bags, which is our project grant administrator. Ryan Disput, our wastewater treatment plant mechanic trainee. My favorite, Mr. Avery Hunter, HR coordinator. Travis Marshall, which is a streets laborer. Dwight Morton, a sanitation equipment driver. Mr. Jared Redding, a utility maintenance trainee. Benjamin Stevens, a fire, oh, sorry, chief firefighter. And that's it.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, yes. For the Police Department, I have the honor of introducing several of our new officers. I'll start off with the ones that could not be present today. Christine, Christina Larrabee Grant, which you met when she received the, the award for, in front of you. Matthew Hinton. Bodie Denham. Cameron Wall. And then we do have present for you today. If, as I call your name, if you'll come up front for me, please. Brian Bowers. Josh Center. Dean Lowe. And also not here with us today is Matthew Keith. Those are, these are our fairly new officers, as to new to the Police Department. Officers returning to the Police Department is Matthew Scott and Matthew Buchanan. Again, these individuals have been hired within the last two years as requested and wanted to bring them before you to be able to introduce them to you and you can see them in person. Most of them have been here at least a year or going on a year, and have been doing a fabulous job. Thank you.
Next, we go on to City Manager and Administrative Reports. Public Works is first. Do you want to say anything, Mr. Griffith first?
Yes, Mr. McMillan's coming to the front. I'll just, I guess, Mayor, you already know that the other Commissioners know. Our Employee of the Month is not here yet, so we'll probably take that item up as soon as they show. And just one quick update, Mr. McMillan, if you don't mind. You'll receive an email from me by Monday with a draft job description for the legislative aide. I'm asking that you review that, and if you have any input, please set up a time to meet with me so we can discuss it in the next week or so. Mr. McMillan?
I do have a report. Maybe Sunny can put up on the screen for us. But in the first quarter, our plan with Public Works is to diligently document our future projects that we have and any, any encumbrances we have from last year and really set us up for success later in the year in regards to project management and, and future expenses. We have a few vacant positions. We've been working really hard, as you could probably hear from Ms. Virginia. We've made quite a few vacancies go away within sanitation as of today. I believe we are actually fully staffed within sanitation, which is something that has not happened since I've been here and something I think we should be really proud of. And I'd like to thank Ms. Virginia and Avery for making that happen. But right now, we do have, have an issue with our Santa, our Facilities Department in that we currently only have our superintendent. We have two vacancies. That includes our custodial position. And we are actively seeking people to fill those positions. And if anyone knows anyone, please send them on down to Public Works, and we would gladly interview them. We're in a tight spot regarding our, our commercial sanitation trucks. We've been battling this since I've been here. We've got no reserve truck for commercial. So when, when we have a scheduled maintenance or an unscheduled maintenance for our commercial routes, we end up running one truck for essentially midnight until five, six, seven, or eight o'clock at night with two drivers going. We do have a procurement proposed later on in this meeting that I believe will help with both residential and commercial and solve those problems. We are also looking to reevaluate our routes this year and try to rebalance some of the load on the trucks. And if we are able to purchase a new vehicle to replace one of our older ones, I think that will actually help with collections as well. One of the other projects, I think, at least senior and dear to me, that we're doing is transitioning all of our cemetery records into a GIS format. And it'll be publicly available on a website. That would allow anyone to be able to pull up records to see if a plot is available, who is at a spot or who is, who is at a plot or any records associated with those. Also, it helps us maintain a, an accurate record of sale and, and helping customers and people who are just looking for loved ones, being able to find them in the cemetery. We're beginning to see a lot of positive movement in our operating policies that we've been implementing over the last year. that we've been implementing over the last year. We're trying to create an environment and a culture where we've got employees who want to stay here. They feel that they've got, you know, a career that they can build upon and they take pride in where they work. And one of the major components of that is actually a career progression plan. So this is a roadmap that we intend to implement with our staff that allows, you know, future employees or even current employees to see the steps that they need to take to progress throughout their chosen career path here or transfer to others. You know, it gives them one more tool in the arsenal to be successful here and allows us to train and create the best candidates internally for vacancies, which I think is important for succession planning and employee retention. We've got, you know, a high turnover rate and we want to reduce that as much as possible. List of our projects that we've got going on right now, one of the major projects that we've just wrapped up and will actually continue to work on in another phase is the FEMA mitigation work on the city docks has been completed. So the city main docks with the floating docks are currently open. There was a substantial amount of work that was done in response to the two storms last year. Essentially, the walking surface of the dock had become disconnected from the pilings. If we had a high tide, it could just float away. So now that has been secured with over six hundred stainless steel brackets. Significant amount of structural timbers have been replaced underneath that as well. So we're happy to say that that is, that is in full swing and able to be enjoyed by our public. Some of the other notable projects we've got on the docket for this year or are currently working on are the City Hall Hardening Project, the Palaca Police Department Roofing, potential HVAC repairs, the City Hall Annex Roofing repairs. So the notice to proceed for the Annex Reroof was issued this week. And that is to start on or after November first. So now that the Cultural Affairs Department has relocated to the Jenkins, we can go full swing in replacing that roof and starting to utilize that space without, you know, the leaks that we've had over the last few years. The Price Martin Facility Hardening, you know, we just got approval from the granting agency to proceed. So we're working with the engineers to create that scope and put it out on the streets. The Public Works Facility Construction and Relocation is another project that we're working on very hard. St. John's Avenue Resurfacing is something that I think everyone is aware of. And so we are actively pursuing putting that out on the streets for open bid. We're continuing to work with the county with the rest of the St. John's Avenue Resurfacing and Drainage Improvement Projects. We are currently working through the Jenkins Facility Remodel and issuing and potentially awarding in November the bids to complete that work to fully utilize that space. We should, within the next two to three weeks, release the Hank Bryan Park Bathroom ITB for public bid as well. So that's something that the Commission prioritized last year and something that we look forward to bringing to you. And Palaca Heights Alt A for a Powerable Water System. That project is about seventy-five percent completion now. So we're starting to wrap up a lot of the excavations and reporing some of the sidewalks in that area. And I think our citizens will be glad when we're out of there and we have a nice area that's got at least better sidewalks and potable water lines that aren't, you know, turn of the century. As our responsibilities expand, we're pushing to educate our staff and trying to make them better equipped to manage all these projects. So there's a lot of training that goes into not only our new staff, but our existing staff to meet the standards that we're trying to outline for the city and really defining those standards. We have some engineering packets that we can share with you at a later date to, you know, be able to communicate the standards that we expect from our contractors and from our own staff to maintain. We have several bids again that are being worked on in the first quarter. That is the Jenkins Facility Remodel. Again, the Hank Bryan Park Restroom and the Public Works Facility Design Build, which you should see later in this meeting for award to the design build contractor for design services and construction pricing. Some of our statistics, again, we've been pushing for a higher level of accountability from our staff for quite some time now. Expanding the use of our iWorks Work Order Management System and inputting a lot more of the information that we generate, but just haven't really been paying attention to in the past. So we've been creating key performance indicators for all departments, such as our response time to work orders, the costs associated with the work orders, man hours associated with the work orders, and trying to line up our staffing time that's allocated to them with the actual cost to the city to be able to report those things to you. And actually, at our quarterly reports, you should see a lot more detail with those. But right now, as of October one, two, I believe, two days ago, we have closed over four hundred and ninety-five work orders. And there's a breakdown in a table, which I think I can go a little further down there. The sanitation department, and this is primarily bulk waste, yard waste collections and trash can deliveries. Hundred and seventeen work orders have been closed. Streets and stormwater has closed ninety-three. The majority of those are potholes and signs. Water and Sewer, they've closed over one hundred and seventy-five. And kind of the stars here, they've been transferring, you know, a significant amount of our older meters into a new R nine hundred system, which Palaca Gas utilizes for billing now. So we're removing old hardware and bringing in new. So you should see, you know, a lot more work orders associated with that from your water and sewer department. Also, quick response times for leaks is one of our KPIs, and that's something that we are tracking. Our Facilities and Grounds has closed over sixty-seven work orders. A lot of those are facilities repairs internally here and also a lot of tree shrimming along the riverfront and in our parks. Our fleet has closed out thirty-one maintenance items. So these, right now, are being reported as not necessarily preventative maintenance, but actual field responses. So if they've got a breakdown or tire change, you know, a physical breakdown of a vehicle that needs to be pulled out of surface, those are the instances that you're seeing there for thirty-one. So they've been fairly busy and a lot of those take multiple days. And there's a significant procurement effort involved in getting the parts to us if we don't have something. And our cemetery says enclosed twelve work orders, which is not necessarily twelve full plots sold or burials, but at least twelve transactions with customers to date. Our sanitation division has had the highest amount of carryover work orders regarding bulk waste collection. And, you know, we haven't really been fully staffed and our clamshells haven't been operating as well as they need to. But we should see those go down drastically now that we're running in zones and able to deploy a set amount of work orders and keeping track of specifically, you know, areas that we want to pick up and not just, you know, picking up the work orders that we have, but as they go through an area, they're supposed to clear out the entire streets. So as we go through that, we generate even more work orders on top of what we're doing. But right now, we have four hundred and thirteen open work orders for yard debris, which is something that we really want to bring down. We anticipate that in the remainder of Q one and Q two. Again, you should see a large increase in all of these totals. But we really want to focus on the top one in this, the chart slightly lower. There, Sunny, if you could bring me down. Think it's catching it all the way. But that's okay. Yes, I'm missing it. It's going between pages. But again, this report will be emailed to you in full as well and at the end of the quarter, an expansive report for this. We are creating additional categories to really kind of narrow down what we're doing and be able to report that to you as well. We want to reduce or completely remove the miscellaneous category within our work order tracking system. Again, that leaves a lot of ambiguity and we want to be exact with what we're doing and reporting to you into the public. We do track fairly actively the tonnages by truck for our sanitation department. And I guess that's not going to quite show it up there either. But I can tell you that, you know, on average, we collect up to date so far for October, you know, over a hundred tons per vehicle. And that's, you know, with the rear loaders, that's people physically moving each pound of that into the back of the trucks. Our clamshells have been low, unit twenty-eight and unit thirty. They've been in the twenty to thirty ton range. But again, we really want to bring up those numbers and report back to you so you can see that difference. And with our finances in this section, further down, what you'll see is our current encumbrances. You know, we average, you know, two to three, four percent right now. Our goal is to hit a quarterly expense rate, you know, for our finances so that we're not coming in drastically under or over budget. If we are under expensing, obviously, we're not completing the work that we set out to do for the year. For over expensing, we're not being fiscally responsible. We've got too many emergencies that are coming. But if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And again, I will email this report directly to you to make it easier to view.
Yes. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. I have a suggestion on operation of clamshell. Ran into this where a citizen contacted me and was actually, she had displeasure and kind of rightfully so, but I also know the process. And I would like for us to maybe implement a process of when a citizen called in and they have refuge on the side of the road and they want it picked up, I know that the procedure is to call in, get a ticket, and we take care of it. However, I would like to see when that happens, if Mr. Campbell had garbage at the end of the road, my road, and I'm in the beginning of that road, and the truck passed my garbage and go pick his up and leave the area, maybe the driver could actually have a book to notate. Hey, I also picked up this garbage on this road as well. And so it could be notated and then put in your system versus have to come back later. Though it don't make a lot of sense and maybe you want to.
You're correct. And actually, that is our current practice. We were enforcing the new drivers to really understand if you've tried by something. And it's not something that, you know, can be picked up by the two-man truck on Wednesdays. You know, typically, we don't bill for that collection. The clamshell is a revenue generation. But yes, they are told to work in a zone. They get work orders generated by that zone. So we'll pick, you know, several blocks to run out and come back to us. But anything within that area, they are also writing down physically what they pick up, the makeup of that pile, the volume for billing. And then we go back and create more work orders for it. So there may be fifteen work orders in a zone. They might come back with thirty work orders at the end of the day.
So they will pick it up?
Yes.
Versus?
Correct.
Also, kind of just to piggyback, I get some of those calls and I myself had to make some of those calls. It may be an opportunity for us to get with our Public Information Officer to put out what the, I guess, a schedule or what is picked up by what. Because I know I've personally set some stuff on the side of the road that should have been picked up, that wasn't picked up, didn't make a big gripe about it. But I think it would be an opportunity for us to inform citizens of that process if they don't know that process and possibly putting it out on our media platforms just so that we are or we have something that we can refer them to just information purposes.
Absolutely. We actually have a current campaign that we're running with our PIO. And we will continue to send out the mailers. Actually, I believe a couple of months ago, we did have an informational brochure that went out with everyone's water bills. But we still want to continue to update that and keep it in fresh, I guess, recall for everyone. Especially with the new changes in the ordinance and things like that. We want to make sure everyone understands how we collect and things like that. We do see a lot of, you know, noncompliance, such as, you know, construction debris put out or tree crews generating a large amount of debris to be taken out. And that's actually required to be picked up. So we do our best to communicate those things with the driver. But again, those continual communication is what we're working for.
Yeah, I think it's just an opportunity, everyone, you all know, when I sit here, the more information we put out, we as Commissioners or, you know, sit on this dais, we can have something to direct them to. So I'm all about making sure that we educate our citizens. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I also appreciate that and have seen that. And from the Realtor's perspective, other people keep moving into town. So it's something that has to be sent out on a regular basis to catch people. Commissioner Form?
I mean, yeah, I share that same sentiment. We've all had people to do that and I've also shared, worked with Peter and also with Dale and Jonathan regarding those communication going out to the public. Because there is a number of things that happen as it relates to when they pick up or what have you. So they send out campaigns. So certainly, I can vouch for that. We just need to, we just need to make sure that everybody on it, you know, Commission knows as well.
Absolutely.
Mayor, her question is the one that kind of prompt me, her responses kind of prompt. When a person, say for instance, a new resident moves into town or acquire a new property, is there any information that's given to them that would, I guess, give dates of trash pickup and things of that nature? Do we have anything of that magnitude?
You know, that is actually an excellent opportunity you've identified. And when we have customers that set up a new account with Black Gas, we will most likely within the next week make a handout for them to let them know their location and their pickup schedule, which, and we get those calls too. Hey, my trash can's out white and you pick it up. Well, you're yesterday. You missed, so we can switch. And that's, again, perfect example of how we need to continue to communicate and how we can improve.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any further questions? McMillan, thank you, Mr. McMillan, and thank you to all the Public Works staff for Rachel. Chief Taylor?
Chief, do I need to give you back the pointer or am I the pointer lady today?
You can point it if you like. I was just going to read through it. They have the report. Figured I'd just read through it and hit the highlights. Good evening, Madam Mayor Commissioners. I wanted to deliver a quick report on our activities during the fourth quarter for the Fire Department. I believe you guys all have a copy in your packets. We spent a lot of hours training this quarter. We have added certified instructors to our cadre, added an inspector two, added several boat operators. We received the Firehouse Subs Grant for new extrication tools, sent three responders to help with the recovery efforts at Hurricane Aldalia along with the county and received the State Fire Marshal's Grant to install exhaust capture devices on our engine and tower. This increases our protection against cancer in the station. From July one to September thirty, we ran five hundred and twelve calls for service at the downtown station. We ran four hundred and eighty-six calls in the K Larkin Response District. Fire crews toured several facilities, including the new gas plant at the Seminole Electric Facility and toured the confined spaces at Georgia Pacific during their outage. We spoke with approximately one hundred and seventy-eight people about fire safety and gave out six smoke detectors to homeowners who did not have them installed in their residence. Our instructors also helped recertify and train with the Palaca Police Department on CPR and first aid. Department completed one hundred and thirty-six annual inspections for businesses this quarter and added one hundred and forty-five pre-plans to our mapping program. Also, we have begun planning and procurement of the bay door replacement at the K Larkin Station. The last few pages of the report show some of the many events, training and educational opportunities we have moving into the first quarter of the new fiscal year. These include the Fire Marshal's Conference in Gainesville, ladder operations training in North Carolina, Fire Prevention Month for all the schools is happening. And that usually gets us into all the schools and most of the daycares. And we end up doing a lot with the local businesses for fire extinguishers. We will have an upcoming training drill at St. John's Shipbuilders for confined space rescue. We continue to update and add training to ensure our personnel are prepared for whatever may come our way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions of Chief Taylor?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next presentation of Personnel Policy Updates, Ms. Jones.
Madam Mayor Commissioners, the two pieces of our personnel policy that we have before you is Section Eight, our benefits portion, which the language has been updated so that it states and goes in line with our municipal stating in our pension and all of our other codes. So just language change so that it conforms to what we already have in place. And the other portion is Section Nine, our employee relations. The only thing that changed in that is additions to make us ADA compliant in our grievance policy. And the section, the name changed just from grievance procedure and we added and the ADA. So it makes us ADA compliance in that portion. Any questions?
Before we take questions, I do want to make two other quick notes on Section Nine. Before this comes before you at the next meeting for acceptance, any specific names, because a previous city manager was named in the policy and my name is in here, will be removed and it'll just state the position of city manager for the grievance procedure.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. When you start talking about the, you elaborate a little bit on the retirement plan because it does not indicate a category for yours truly like us Commissioners. And that's important. We're going to change something that can affect us.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. I had an opportunity to look into this issue and the language deletion under the retirement plan, which was a strike through on employees working a thousand hours or more, that basically reconciles the language. That basically reconciles the language so that elected officials are now eligible for the retirement plan. So. This basically is a fix to that language that would have precluded you from benefiting in the retirement plan.
Well, we already was benefited, didn't it?
Yeah, so this policy document was in conflict with your municipal code, which governed the retirement plan. So we're bringing this policy document in line and having it reference the municipal code. Where the requirements for eligible employees are located, which includes the elected officials, sir, as you pointed out.
Well, I would like to pull that section before we approve that and I would I would like to review that a little more.
Would you like us to send the specific ordinance uh for you to review?
That would be great. Um, but I also would like to have a discussion with legal and HR to clearly understand. Because you said we're striking the language that um I would like more understand. Personally, I don't know about the other commissioners, but I want to understand on that before I say yay yay to it up here today.
Anybody else?
And also, why are we taking out grievance? Uh, because there is a grievance procedure. Uh, law enforcement and firefighters have guarantee, of course, and and other language and other protections. But for the general employees. Is the grievance process and I see where we struck out the. The commission as. The board that will review those. So I'm not in agreeance to that as well.
Uh, I apologize, sir. I do not see where we've stricken the commission as the reviewing board. All I see is underlying additions to this policy.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't, I don't even have it in this packet for C. Pardon me? Yeah, I mean, I don't have four C. I saw it earlier.
Just have four. I didn't have, we didn't have four C.
Say thirty-six?
Yes, sir.
Going back to the grievance. Grievance procedure. Okay, so if you go to municipal. It refers to. Commission. Here, it says the grievance will go and pretty much start with the city manager. I mean, is everybody else okay with it and they saw it already? It's a good point, but I wanted to bring it out.
Well, I mean, there's, I mean, there's a, there's a total, I mean, that's a complete difference when it, when it goes from. The commission to the city manager that takes the commission out of the decision-making process and it's policy-based. I'm I'm not willing to just say, okay, well, hey, we'll just turn that over because we we could be potentially. Taking a person's voice away from them if they do have a, have a grievance. So I'm just not in line with that.
So uh could I ask you to reference what section of municipal code where you saw this?
Go back to five oh four grievance procedure and. You guys changed the la- uh language and proposed it, so.
No, we we have not changed the existing grievance procedure. We've added additional sections. That were suggested by Tom Masters, specifically. A description of an anti-discrimination policy, a description on how to report and the investiga- investigatory procedure. And then prohibit prohibition against retaliation and a section on intentional false reports, a section on confidentiality. Equal employment opportunity policy and employment eligibility policy, which did not exist. The existing grievance procedure stays intact. The only change that I'm suggesting is to remove any specific names. As myself or Michael Simbor, which was actually listed in the policy document and just reference the city manager.
It's titles.
Well, here it is. Bottom. So here it is where earlier it states. Okay, grievance po- policy, process. If you have a grievance with your supervisor, we and and instructing them to go to your supervisor. Wouldn't that be a? Like conflict? Should it go to maybe you first? Or HR? I mean, it it, but it's not in. Look at it. Look at it. Don't take my words.
Okay, so the employee goes immediately to the immediate supervisor. They have the option to bypass and then they can go to the city manager.
Whoa, they have the option to bypass without talking, trying to resolve it with their supervisor, just.
Well, I could think a number of hypothetical situations where the individual may not be comfortable addressing the supervisor. Sexual misconduct, things of that nature.
Pretty much standard process in HR to to do that, to go to the next level up if you are uncomfortable approaching your immediate supervisor. Or if in fact you're alleging there.
HR be the first line that HR is order board.
And that is our practice. That's exactly what we do.
So I do know we have.
Time, please.
I do, I do know we've had problems before, um, within the last, I think. Three to five years, we have had where um individuals did not um report issues to. HR and it and it rested with uh within the department. And there were some issues that came out of that. So again, we need to make sure that we clean up. The policies so they're pretty clear in indirect as to how people need to proceed.
And. Um, I also, and if I overlooked it, I'll ask that you point me in the right direction, but what are the steps and procedures? If a grievance is being brought against the city manager? I don't see that spelled out. And again, I may be reflecting on what I've experienced and on other boards. But I had to deal with situations where um the complaint or the grievance was against the executive director. So I would like to see that spelled out um in our. Policy as well.
So I've taken some notes on this. We'll obviously go back to the drawing board. We'll take those under consideration and um. This will not be on your next agenda for adoption consideration. It may be on your next agenda for presentation again, though.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, are we all set with that? Okay, thank you. Um, next is the report on police department roof spatialization study.
Um, so while Dell's coming forward, um. You may recall a couple of months ago, um, we had conversations um that spurred out of. Uh, the discussion for a police department roof. Uh, the estimate at the time uh was four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that took into consideration that there were going to be additional work items that would need to be addressed if and when we replaced the roof on the police department. For instance, gutters, HVAC and some interior modifications. The commission at the time um. Uh, expressed a desire uh to get a proposal from one of our engineering firms. Uh, to see what it would take to do uh an analysis of the current building and an alternative scenario to build a new police department. Uh, at the time, we thought that was going to be around five to ten thousand dollars. Passer and Associates, it's included in your packet. Gave us a proposal just north of fifteen thousand dollars uh to do that programming um and cost estimation for us. In addition, Mr. McMillan and Joe, he's here tonight. We sat down. And looked at a space utilization study. It's kind of hard to read on the screen. I apologize. But it's in your packet. I believe it's on page forty-four. Is that correct, Dell? Well, what we did is we looked at industry standards. Maybe Sonny can zoom in for you. Thank you, Sonny. And the last or second to last column basically shows underutilized or overutilized space. Uh, so if you see a red number or in parentheses, it basically means that we don't have capacity at that building. Now, we didn't look at every building, so this doesn't include either the Tillman House or the Lammer. This is strictly administrative buildings and we put Jenkins in there as well. Uh, the only caveat to that, I will say that the analysis of the space utilization on Jenkins. Takes into consideration the current allocation of spaces. So if you look at multipurpose. Uh, it shows five thousand sixty-five needed. That's just based upon the program. Or what we're saying we want to do with the building. If we say what we want to do with the building is different, obviously that space utilization calculation would change. So it could show available space. Do you have any questions? The next step is to decide if we want to move forward with procuring the service of passer and associates. To look at what the true cost is for the repairs to the police department and an alternative build scenario.
Mission count?
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner.
I saw the information.
Commissioner Jones?
Well. I do, but I think I've already said before, it's almost like it. I think the decision does have to be made. Are we going, do we want to keep the police department or we want the police department to move? I mean, we already know that some of the is outdated. We know that chief already wanted a roof for the last six years. Hadn't gotten the roof. The the cost went from a hundred thousand dollars just for a roof to four hundred thousand dollars. I think that. You know, the utilization survey. It's telling us. That we probably need to go ahead and do some re- uh new construction over there at that site. That seemed like what you guys keep presenting. So uh I I wouldn't spend the money on a pass rule to tell us something that we already know. I think we should go a little further with. The other options and that's. You guys mentioned one of the options were to have a uh complex. If we're gonna spend the money out at the, this is a thought, okay, and spend the money out to the airport, which we're spending a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to. To 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 put to put a plan out of what that's gonna look like with um public works. Well, how about including that in the scope of work? I don't know. Any other thoughts from the commissioner?
Um, Commissioner Forum does want to say something. I'll go first.
I was just really concerned with the amount of money that we've already spent in the roof already. I think um we've had a. Uh, I, the report, I mean, I think I asked for a report. In terms of the the roof repairs before, and I know that roof has been repaired ever since I've been on the commission just. And there's been com- uh. A re uh issuance of funds to different contractors for reworking. Um, so I'm not, I'm not for spending another four hundred thousand because we probably spent over four hundred thousand in the repairs.
Could you, would you like to come up, please?
Well, there were some repairs done, but thing with that is, uh, I'm not sure if we was able to track down all of the POs, correct?
Come up, chief, please.
Wait, could you tell us what you're asking, chief? That might help.
Uh, first, as far as for the repair portion, um, we never did full out repairs. We did Band-Aids, just something that would patch that. Initial problem. We never did do a full repair of the roof, which over a period of time has caused it to deteriorate. And putting us in a state that we're now, we're needing a full roof replacement. So we never actually did a roof replacement. We just did minor repairs. And those are the things that I provided you in the report as far as those statements and those POs. Because over the years, we did small patchments that looked at either eighteen hundred dollars, three thousand dollars and things like that. Never a large amount of what we're actually actually asking to get a roof replacement over just repairing. Um, minor issues of where we find leaks.
In in into, we gotta think about the current state of the facility, the the. And the, I guess, the the functionality of the police department. In today, I mean, spending a half, almost a half a million dollars on something that's really not truly. Functional from from at least from my, what I'm thinking and and updated uh is is a pretty hard call for me.
What are your thoughts about that, Chief? Uh, Chief, if you're sure in terms of functionality of that particular structure?
Well, I think um.
Actually, I can, if you look, you may not be able to see because it's so small. But Sonny's blowing it up for us. Sonny, if you'll scroll up, you'll see some notes. Um, not sideways and back to the right, or I'll just read it. Um, the current building layout is not conducive to the current use. The building is functionally obsolescent. Interior spaces do not meet fire code, building code and accreditation standards. Renovation costs for the roof and HVAC are estimated at thirty-eight percent of the building's current value. All of the necessary rest uh renovations would require relocating the police department.
Uh, if I may, mayor?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Um. No disrespect to you, but. I want to, and I think uh. Uh, Attorney West does it quite well and I'm gonna follow her. I'm gonna defer this question over to um chief. What is it that you desire? I think at this moment, we've seen it, but you haven't come out and just flat out given us what it is that you truly, truly, truly want. We see it. But you're gonna help us make this decision. What is it? What is that you?
Okay.
Be able to look at, we look at what we have right now. We've been, we know that it's not gonna happen overnight. And while we're sitting here or trying to figure out what's done, we're still. Living in a building that's, a roof that's deteriorating over. So I believe it's our best and swarming weight. If we don't have nothing in the immediate future, I would love to see us at least be able to fix that particular problem. And then look for and within a five-year plan to look for moving out of that building to get a new building.
And when we talk about locations, because um Commissioner Jones did mention the possibility or the thought of the possible, the thought of um. Public Works near the airport and what's your perspective on our location that's kind of west of the city itself downtown? Cause I want to ask, cause he he brought that up.
The city is moving with. If I had a choice, the centralized in Palm Avenue area. But if I had to have a location which would be on one side of the city or another, it would be the west side, which is nineteen and further out west. Due to the fact that um the amount of traffic, it'd be great that we have to respond to several fall. It's better to be on a. On a highway opposed to being um coming through different neighborhoods and things of that nature, where we have to look at.
Focusing on safety issues. Thank you. Focus on all safety issues.
Any further questions, chief?
So have we looked at possibly a substation uh creation? Um, I think, how many employees do we have at the city? Police department?
Forty? Forty. I might be off on one, but. One or two. Thirty-two sworn, uh, I want to say. Probably thirty-nine.
So we're accredited, we're the accredited agency right now, right?
We are, yes, fully accredited agency.
That's not a true fact that.
That statement is in regards to an evidence storage facility.
Let's be specific.
It's also gonna come up in as we, what we stand now and what we've seen over the last week and what me and Joe was just talking about. We are gonna have, if we go through reac- reaccreditation again, issues in the evidence portion because of the damage that we're receiving to the roof. So it will be true or it's becoming as a living uh existence, true at this time.
In a annex, a police annex, what? Any plans with that? Any? What are we gonna do with that?
Is this a choice of mine? So as, as it stands right now, I would love to see the entire department under one roof. Uh, right now, we are separated. Um, the NX operates and is functional now. It serves the, the purpose of the detective division to be able to, to do that, that process, but I'd love to be able to see it under one roof.
So that would be part of the five-year plan, um, included in the five years.
That's great.
We do have all a building next door.
I think that was about to say, can we move it from one problem to the next?
Was your square footage, you know, requirement?
Require, I don't, I don't have a square footage requirement. Um, I think if we wanna look to move into it in a five-year plan, we have to prepare for growth. So it would be something in what we spoke of in the past, uh, something around.
Based upon your current numbers, it's nine thousand.
Okay.
Thousand square.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna go with fifteen thousand, but I, but whatever, whatever the experts say. But you asked me what I wanted, so I was gonna answer.
Square feet, I'm just trying to look at the annex, your police annex, as well as the police department and seeing, uh, you, you, the city own all of that from the frontage from the, uh, seventeen, well, Reed Street on the Saint Johns? We, we got all of that in between?
So the property behind us, no, sir. Um, the property behind us, right after the, um, railroad tracks, does not belong to us. We just have the access to access Saint John's from the detective's division.
So now, my question would be directed to Jonathan. Would you support the recommendation that has been presented with the roof immediate? And then the five-year phase in the five-year plan of, of facility?
Yeah, based upon what I hear, Commissioner, uh, I'll be going back to passer on associates to remove alternative one, which will reduce their scope and fee down. And we'll direct staff to look at, um, essentially a, not a patch, but a more temporary measure to keep the water off of staff. We may not be looking at retrofitting all the HVAC and all the other components. Um, and then we'll modify their scope and fee to also include that five-year plan that look ahead. And we need to really start looking at locations.
Oh.
That would be what I would propose, sir.
Also, we, is there any way we can look at for just our public service as well? My fire, fire department as well, because I, I know that they're having issues with their building as well. And if we can locate, uh, look at locating both, uh, the police and fire, you know, close together, closest possible.
That is a very good point, Commissioner. We would definitely make sure that we identified a site that would allow for a public safety complex in the future. Yes.
I like that, and I think that's, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing it up. Uh, I think if this is an opportune time while we're looking at public works and other facilities, to just go ahead and do a full scope of, we, cause we know all of the buildings. I wish we could move as well, but that's another story. Um, but I think this is the opportune time for this conversation to be happening, and I hope that we see it to fruition.
I, I, I do know they have funding available at one point for, um, all of like fire and police, I've heard throughout the league. Um, a couple of situations where they had funding available for, uh, EMS type stuff, fire EMS police.
I think we've got the direction we need, Commissioners.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
But the main direction, fixed roof.
Fixed roof. Thank you.
Now, how possibly, how, this is for John, uh, or either, um, yeah. Mr. McMillan, um, generally, if that's the X, what would be the possible turnaround time on making something like that happen with the roof?
Uh, the threshold we'd have to hit, it, it would have to go to open competitive bid, so there would be a couple of months turnaround before we could come to a word.
May we, I guess, what will be the follow-up to this meeting to make sure that it's something that doesn't fall between the cracks? Um, we've.
Well, it's been added to our project tracking sheet, so we meet weekly every Monday on that. So, uh, that keeps us from, you know, losing track of certain projects. Uh, we'll make it a priority to get the bid out in the next couple of weeks, and it'll be back before you guys, probably first of the year.
Okay, obviously, they've gone too long with this issue in place and the buckets need to go away, so.
Have money. Yeah, everything costs money. And we gotta either raise some taxes or shift some funds.
Um, are we all set on this topic?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Financial statement as of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Scotty.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, everyone that's here. Uh, for the eleven months ended August thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Year to date, uh, the city has brought in thirty-seven million eight hundred eleven thousand six hundred thirty-seven, and we've spent thirty-four million five hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-six. So we're operating, uh, the net results for the city as a whole is positive. We're ahead of the game by three million two hundred thirty-one thousand. We're also looking at some other receivables that are due, and we're figuring that out. So we expect this number to be higher, at least a million more, when we look at the grants that have more, uh, receivables that are due. So, but looking at general fund, uh, general fund brought in eleven million eight hundred ninety-three thousand, and, um, it actually spent about ten million on page two, I'm sorry, I can't pick up. But anyway, the profit for, or the results are, revenues are greater than expenses for general fund by one million three hundred twenty-two thousand. Back to page one, the airport is operating at a plus number. Uh, the revenues are two million three hundred forty-three thousand, but they've only spent two million thirteen thousand. So airport has, uh, net results of three hundred twenty-nine thousand. The ARCA funds, uh, we spent two million two hundred seventy-five thousand. So we recognize that same amount in revenues, so it's operating flat. On page two, the golf course, um, is, uh, operating flat. We've had to, um, put subsidize that account, a transfer in a hundred seventy-five thousand to the golf course. Find better places, um, operating flat, but there are more grant revenues that we're expecting in. Sanitation operated at a profit of five hundred forty-seven thousand, generated two million nine. And it spent two million four hundred thousand. And finally, the third page, uh, utility fund generated thirteen million year to date. And it has a profit of four hundred thousand. We are expecting more revenues in utility funds, again, because of the grants. Uh, the TIF fund generated six hundred ninety-nine thousand, but year to date, as of the end of August, had only spent eighty-eight thousand. So there's a profit, there are six hundred eleven thousand dollars. So and at the end of the day, the, uh, city is operating its, um, funds. All of the funds are experiencing more revenues than expenses, and so that's a good spot to be in. The finance department is, um, getting ready for the audit already. We're starting early. And so, um, that's a sidebar. But you can look at the, uh, picture, the graphs, one more page down, if you would. And what is showing is reflecting that, um, thirty-six percent of our revenues are coming in with the, um, general fund and thirty-one percent for utility. And then for expenses, um, it's a like relationship, thirty-three percent in general and thirty-two percent with, uh, utility. So we have, uh, we are now closing or moving towards closing September thirtieth, and we'll be able to present those financials in our next meeting for September, pre-audit.
Okay, Commissioner Oram.
Yeah, on the, um, golf course, I know we was nearing, um, I guess, with the transfers of one seventy-five or one eighty, um, we shouldn't be paying off all of that debt. So, um, where are we in relation to that? I know we supposed to have been paying it off by the end of this year.
Okay, I will.
November timeframe.
Uh, yeah, I would prefer.
Roll off this year, sir, and actually, I'd like to have an opportunity to review that in more detail with Ms. Cardy. I know that there's some franchise agreement, um, review that needs to occur. Um, just to make sure that we built a budget that actually matches, uh, the arrangement that we have with Mr. Hertz. So we may, if you don't mind, if we could just give you a more detailed report on that at the next meeting?
And the, the airport should be rolling off as well, right?
I believe it's debt did roll off, yes, airport did roll off.
So we should be looking really, really good in those regards, I think.
The airport is improving. Uh, uh, even during the budgeting process, we noted that.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Uh, thank you.
Okay, we're going to, um, open the floor up to public comment. Um, that will give, um, each person in the community the opportunity to express their views or thoughts to us. And our responses from the commission and staff will occur during the regular business portion of the agenda, number twelve. Um, we have Mr. Spell, Jacob Spell. Please. Good evening, um, please give your name and address for the record.
Fifty-nineteen Quirrell Avenue, Ivy twenty, Biloxa Florida, three, two, one, seven, seven.
Thank you.
I have, uh, two questions, one for the commissioner and one for the manager. Mr. Griffin, over the years, I've lived here all my life, and it's never been an urgency to have assistant manage until the present, the past manager decided to leave, so it was quite an urgency to put someone in place. Mr. Griffin, was this the plan to get you into loop? So that you would already have all the necessary qualifications or whatever to step into the managership? In the beginning, uh, you said you didn't want the job. Come hell or high water, you did not want it. So what has changed now? You was given, uh, pay raise. Given the job, all you need is the title. Now, knowing the way the commission votes, it's always someone in house. So what you all done in the plan has already put you in position feeling that the commissioner are gonna vote you in. You had others to come in to apply, but the plan says they were gonna be turned down. And over a period of time, this went on, now it comes up to get a city manager. So all these people have been turned down, you know all that information, all the inside scoop. Talk to the guy supposed to replace. Just put a new city manager in place, which you shouldn't have done, that takes advantage of the others, so they can't talk to this man. With that being said, now you want the job. You've been given a raise, the position, really. And you also have threatened to leave, which I don't think is a very professional position to put yourself in if you don't get the job. And with all that's been handed to you on a silver platter, I can't see how food would lead that to the commission. You know, Madam Mayor, I don't know your educational background, but I do have a review of the other commissioners, which all have degrees. But the question I wanna know, do you all, educational background extends so far out that you can't step back and take a look at the game that's being played? It makes you all look like low-hanging fruit.
Thank you, Ms. Spell. Three minutes are up, and we will address your questions a little further in the agenda.
Well, I wanted to, I said in the beginning, I had two questions, one for him.
I know, and we.
So I, I want to ask both of the questions, then I'd come back to him to answer, then you all.
We, everybody, them a little later in the agenda, but we will answer your questions. Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Vickers?
Ask you, Vickers, two zero seven North Eighteenth Street. I was, this is my third trip here for the same answer, for the same question. Policy, procedure? And one, I can't get it answered. You said that, and you would call me back, you didn't. I came, she gonna call us chief of police. I asked her about policy procedure. It comes from low. I don't ask no question unless I know the answer to it before I ask. I just wanna make sure that you are telling me, but am I right or wrong? Policy procedure comes from low. It give you, a policy tells you what you can do with a procedure. There's a question.
We do.
To you.
Yes, and we'll, we'll have.
No, ma'am, I asked her now, you told me that I can get this. You told me before, you give me later. I sit here for thirty-five, forty minutes, you never called me back. I had to come back to another meeting, still ain't got it answered. This is my third trip up here, and then you go push me off again. See, policy procedure, the rule of law. We are equal to each other. If we equal to each other, we equal to the same thing. This is what here is a list of calls for service that was done, done for the chief of police, and they went there and did it. I called a few times. I got neutral, but I couldn't do it because I was private property. They don't do private property. They told me that people can come to their office and have cars towed away without having, uh, a, uh, tow. Can you hear me now? You heard me before.
Everybody else can't, so, yes.
Okay.
May, if I may, I believe that the question was answered last meeting.
As anything I asked, ever since I've been coming here for questions and answers. I'm waiting for an answer, ma'am. You can't give an answer?
Okay, so I, I'm going to just recap procedure on public comment. Your comments go to the chair of the commission, and they are not to be directed to staff. This is not a question or answer, um, session. Now, if the chair of the commission, the mayor, directs staff to answer, uh, either at this time or at a later time, or one of the commissioners through the mayor asks for staff to be responsive to a public record or a public comment, then it is certainly at the liberty of the chair of this commission to do so. But staff should not be responsive to public comment in, in a conversational dialogue. That is just not, um, good policy and procedure, since we're on that topic under Robert's rules of order. Uh, to Commissioner Campbell's point, this question was answered last meeting.
But we will, uh, have Ms. West respond again, as I mentioned, to Mr. Spell. Um, if further on in the gender, if you look, if you have an agenda, and I don't know if you do, Mr. Vickers, but number twelve specifically.
Madam Mayor.
You sure could. You sure could.
Please, as this agenda is provided, you know, public comment is item number five. And then we have the answers down at. Number twelve through a lot more conversation, and I think we need to move that up to at least have. I mean, I'm gonna forget what this conversation was about by the time we get to the end of this agenda. I think we should, we, we have a, people come in here and ask questions, uh, interact. And ma- and matter of factly, I encourage it, but to say, to sit down and wait. Until the end of this, the, 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 the meeting, I think that's, that's not right. So we need to have a compromise. We're hearing the folk out, but we should be able to give them some kind of response, and that's what I want.
I believe that, I believe that the item I made mention to have that talked about. So the mentioning of number twelve is actually for us to discuss what we would like to see. So that's what item number twelve is. I made that request that we have a discussion about being able to respond and have staff respond. So that's the meaning of number twelve. So, Mr. Vickers, we will get to how we want to remove. But I believe that the question was answered last.
I never got an answer. You may have got an answer, I didn't. Because if I had the answer, I wouldn't be here today. I've been sitting here for an hour, listening to you discuss what you want to discuss. Now you tell me I gotta sit here for another hour while you come back to me when it's gonna be resolved now. I don't see why it's fair to me to sit here while you take care of your business when I got the business to take care of. I took time off for me to take care of what, you have public comment should be answered then, not when you wanna do it. It's not your job to do that.
Okay, thank you. And let's, we will talk about it right now. Do Commissioner Borman, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Mr. Vickers, I think, uh, if, whenever we wanna have, I guess, some dialogue with staff. Or the commission, I think the appropriate thing to do would be to get on the agenda. If you get on the agenda at that point, you wouldn't have to wait, you would have to wait for public comment. Because again, generally for Robert, rule of order, public comment section. You, um, there's generally not, uh, engagement for the most part. The, 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 the public comment comes directly to the board and not to staff or anybody, not to staff or anybody else. But if you, I mean, uh, this is just a recommendation from me, so that you would be able to be able to engage with. The commission or staff, uh, I would recommend that it goes on, come on the agenda. And that way you'll have more than, you have more than three minutes.
Okay.
That's just a suggestion.
On the agenda, you have to put, it'd be approved. You have to, uh, be approved for what you wanna talk to. Why do I have to tell you what I wanna talk about on the agenda? And it has to be approved if you wanna talk to me about it. That's not right. And see, I, I actually read it, but I guess the card I just gave you all.
Thank you.
Can she read the card I gave her, y'all gave you, I gave you on each one of them? Ready, I just wanna read into the records.
I, I don't, again, she doesn't, at this point, she's not, we, we will respond to your, we'll give you a response, and we will.
Okay, so you, that card I give you, you can't read it to tell me what it says?
At this point, during public comment, we're not going.
Yes, yes, public comment. I gave you something that I wanted a response to it.
Assistant, Mr. Vickers, we're gonna have a discussion further down in the agenda. That's gonna allow us to have open dialogue of how we want to address this moving forward. So we're not trying to, not trying to, um, limit or push you away. We, this, the reason that this has come up, because I've had some concerns about it as well as others. So we're gonna have a, at length discussion so that we can address what it is that we desire to have moving forward.
I'm not going away.
We don't want you to go away.
Is there anybody else here for public comment? It's Givens.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Tarsha Givens. My address is two twenty-five Stewa Avenue, Palaca, Florida. Good evening, um, commissioners and city officials and everyone that's present. I do have a question about the agenda. To add to what Mr. Vickers was saying, I requested to be added to the agenda back in March, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. For the city commissioner meeting. I was too denied to be added on the agenda. And I was told that I could speak during public comments, and that, of course, was several months ago. But, um, I would like to know more information about, you know, how do you actually get on the agenda? In addition to that, I was wondering, since I've been attending the city commissioners meetings, um, since back in March. Um, I'm still learning, but I wanna know, when did the agenda change? To where we are allowed to make public comments, but then we have to wait until the end of the evening to get an answer? Or when we make public comments now, we're not able to, like, have a dialogue. And to me, I see the commissioners being stripped of their power. And I feel like it's a disservice to us as citizens that we come here, we share our concerns. But then our concerns are falling on, like, deaf ears. Cause as, uh, Commissioner Jones said, by the time we get to the end of, the end of the agenda. And the questions are asked during public comments, which is earlier in the city commission meeting. Um, it's a possibility that it's not as fresh in your mind, and you've forgotten what we, the citizens have asked. Or what we're requesting. So my question is, how do we come, how do you make up the agenda for each city commission meeting? What determines what goes on the agenda? Does the city commission has a, have a say in what goes on the agenda? Or is this already put together and just passed out without having your input? That's my question. And I do have some information I'd like to ask later on, but I think we're gonna be discussing that later on. When it comes down to discussion, update on city manager search. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Ms. Kitchens?
Allegro kitchens, ten twenty-seven South Twelfth Street, Palaca, Florida. Excuse me, since you have three people in the audience, and now I'm adding myself as fourth. I don't see why you can't move item twelve up and address it first. You've done that in, uh, for other items when somebody came out of town or wanted to, you had people waiting to hear something. So if you move item twelve up now and discuss it, I think that would solve a lot of the problems that's going on right now. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Um, that was gonna be my suggestion to move it up to like where, um. Up just before, just after public, uh, recognitions and presentations or whatever. Uh, and then that'll proceed, um, city manager and adminis- administrative reports. Uh, that was just gonna be my recommendation, but it's up to, um, the commission as to how we wanna move things around, so.
Since, since we're talking about it, I think the difference in this, what we've seen and what's been presented. As I look at our previous, um, agenda up under public comment, it had, where it had staff response. So if there is a change, that has been the change that has been made, not sure why. But the discussion, again, I want to make clear that number twelve is not. Rego- is regarding this portion of the meeting, but what we want to see moving forward. It's not to push you away to that point. The point that I made to have a discussion is because of situations that we have had, where we've had, been asked questions, have had, has been asked questions. And what we have done, which was move to have them at a certain time for our response. But based on the agenda that was printed on the twelve and the agenda that we have before us. It appears on this agenda that it, we won't give a response as we were able to give a response on our previous agenda. Because there was a part B to the item of public comment, which was staff response.
So for that point, this is the time where staff responses should be right now. After we just heard public comment. And that's it, because the agenda changes without the commission's input. And I don't think that was right.
And the, and another thing that, I remember the day, the evening, it was actually two meetings ago. Where Mr. Vickers, we gave response, but. He got, he was some, we acknowledged it, but by the time we acknowledged it, he was already gone. And so I think that's where he said that he wait, he did wait patiently for that meeting. I don't know, there were some other things that had happened in the twix- in between that it pushed back giving that response. Um, so I do remember where you did come before us, and you did leave midway, and we didn't circle back. But again, item number twelve is for us to have a discussion of what it is that we want to see. So moving forward, Mr. Vickers, and to everyone else.
Thank you. And with all that said, at this point, do we want to respond to these questions, um, both by, by staff and, um, commission?
Yes, so we go ahead and move the meeting forward. I think so.
That's fine. So we had Mr. Spell's questions first. Oh, is there anybody else here for public comment, Ms. I'm so sorry. No, seeing now more quotes, public comment.
Okay, so. Are we moving agenda item twelve up now?
That's technically what's been missing from, we're giving staff response that's not on this agenda. That has been previously since we transferred, or since we, the last couple of meetings, we've had part B to public response. I mean, public comments was staff response. On this agenda, we don't have that. So what we're coming to is asking, can we add the staff comments now? And we still have the discussion at the appropriate time, which is item number twelve.
So with that said, we will start with Mr. Spell's questions. The first one was directed to the city interim city manager.
So I believe my, uh, statements are on the record at previous commission meetings, uh, and my quotes to the paper. Um, I originally did not have an intent to apply based upon.
Excuse me. Okay, yeah, could you please, sir, sit down, maybe sit right in the front seat? Yes, please. Okay.
Maybe I'll just start off by saying, anybody that wants to talk to me and know my intentions is welcome to schedule a meeting with me at City Hall. Um, born and raised here, wanna stick around, I love my town, and that's the reason that I didn't originally apply. I had concerns about having to relocate my family if I took the role of city manager. I've since taken the interim role, and I enjoy it. I really enjoy leading staff and the community, and that's why I applied. And at that time, I removed myself from oversight of the search process for the city manager. That's my response.
Thank you. And then Mr. Spell also had a secondary question directed towards the commission. And that question. And that we were basically handling, he, he believed we may be handing this position to Mr. Griffith on a silver platter. That we were just easy pickings of sorts. Isn't that what you said, Mr. Spell? I don't wanna misquote you. So the second portion of your question that was directed toward. Come, please come up to, this time, please come up so we can hear you.
All of this activity is going on right before your eye. You see, the plan was set up very, very well. Get the man in place, they know how you normally vote. So. Go past a period of time, you looking for a manager? He've already talked with the gentleman that put the manager in place. Hold it.
I, I'm not saying, I'm just leaning forward.
So now he have a head start on the other people that's gonna apply. And quite natural, if you talk with somebody that's gonna put somebody in position. You're gonna say all the good things to them. The other people can't. So that would be a con- conflict of interest, seemed like to me. He shouldn't have anything to do with the hiring process at all.
I would like to answer the question. The question is, if we were to go ahead and give it to him, he would already have the position.
Exactly.
Fair fact that we have the representative here, that we had questions and concerns that we wanted to have answered. And hopefully we get those answers tonight, so it's not a setup. And if it was a setup on their part, I, as Commissioner Justin Campbell, had no knowledge of it.
Also, um, I don't believe it was a setup, and the gentleman who owns the executive search firm company is going to speak to the city management. City manager hiring issue, um, later in the gender, as Commissioner Campbell just said. But also, everybody who applies speaks to that person as well. Anybody who's qualified, who submits their resume, speaks to Mr. Slaven, who owns the company and is the executive search firm company. They all do. Other than that, was the, Mr. Griffith did that as well by submitting his resume, but everybody does that, that applies. It's the same process.
I do not want this job. Now. Right down the road. Why not? That's the question I wanna know.
Okay, and, and he explained why he changed his mind. People do change their mind, you know, that is, that is, we've all done that at times. But again, he already gave that answer as to, thank you so much.
But I, I'd like for you all to kinda open your eyes and look at the game that's being played.
Thank you. Okay, and then we're, we're, um, to Mr. Vickers. Uh, which, which, go ahead. Our educational background, that's the piece. Okay, I, I may have missed it, I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, thank you.
I'm of the same opinion. I mean, if, if it was a low hanging fruit, we wouldn't, like you say, we wouldn't have, um, slavery here. As well as on the agenda is given direction as to what we need to do going forward. City manager search, whatever, so that will come back out during that time as well, when we have discussion along those lines.
Okay, uh, again, I'm gonna ask Ms. West to reiterate what she really, what she stated last meeting about policy and procedure for Mr. Vickers.
Sure. Policy is the rule, procedure is implementation of that rule. I, I believe that is verbatim what I said last time.
Thank you, um. To be fair, no. Mr. Vickers, to be fair, no.
Likewise, um, I, my office doors are open to any member of the public at any time. Please feel free to reach out to me. I'm more than happy to sit down and chat with you. So that, that holds true for every single citizen in the, the city of Palaca, um, open door policy.
Thank you. And then we had, um, Ms. Givens also had some questions. How to be added to the agenda, Ms. Krantz, would you like to answer that question, please?
Mayor Krantz, thank you for the opportunity, and Ms. Givens as well, thank you for the opportunity. Um, as to be added to the agenda, of course, anyone can fill out an agenda request form. The city, the city staff, along with the mayor, meets to review items that were requested to be on the agenda, both by city staff and by the public. Um, if it's determined city staff needs additional time to prepare, it's the mayor's call to give city staff that additional time to prepare. Um, as to Ms. Givens' item regarding, um, her agenda request of March. I can tell you that at that time, I advised her that her item was scheduled to be on the agenda anyway. And she was welcome to speak during public comment when that agenda item was there. Staff had already planned to bring that specific item to the commission at that time.
Thank you. And is, do we feel that sufficient, sufficient response, um, as far as agenda development? Ms. Krantz did kind of give a general overview of that. Commissioner Borman?
Well, yeah, my question would be, whenever she submitted her request. Well, um, if, if it's to be done at the, um, public comments, you're only limited to three minutes. But if, if you're on the agenda, you're not limited to three minutes, so.
I noted to the mayor that she was a presenter at that time, and it was the mayor's prerogative to allow her more than that three minutes. The, the mayor and the commission was informed that she had made that agenda request.
And the item was already on the agenda.
Okay, alright.
Is there anything?
What was that ample time?
We're not gonna go the dialogue back and forth. I'm sorry, folks.
I, I'm asking a question. Was that ample time for her, for her, um, item to be moved to public comments? And to have the dialogue that she would need to be able to engage if there was any dialogue that need to happen? That's the question.
And.
Okay, so I thought Ms. Krantz pointed out that the item that Ms. Givens requested be placed on the agenda. Was already on the agenda, and she could speak to it. So we would not, in an ideal world, put the same item on the agenda twice and have you speak about it twice. So in that instance, her. So in that instance, her item was already on the agenda for consideration. Now, when people submit an agenda request past the agenda deadline, we do let them know if it's urgent that they can come and speak at public comment in advance of when it can be placed on the agenda. I would like to make the statement that your staff does not take any action to refuse the public or anyone the opportunity to place things on your agenda. We do, however, request that they properly fill out the form and state the intent of the item and the recommended action from the commission. We don't always get those two latter items.
I think, and I think the difference here, if as I'm listening, the difference is, yes, the agenda item was there. However, had it not been there, Ms. Givens would have been given the opportunity to put it there and she would have had more than three minutes to address the commission. Scratch that, being that it is that it was on the agenda. She then now is limited to three minutes unless the mayor gives more. So I think, I think the discrepancy is very easy if we think about it. More time versus limited time. And that's what am I?
Um, I just wanted to add that I went ahead and put in my request to be added on the agenda. And then I received the call. I was told I would receive a call and they will let me know what they decided. I was never told that, oh, by the way, it's already on the agenda. So I don't know if at some point because of my request, it became added on the agenda. And then I was told, well, it's going to be on the agenda, so you can speak during public comment. So initially I asked to be on the agenda. And then I was told I would receive a call. So maybe two days later, I was told that I would not be allowed to be added to the agenda. But that I could speak during public comment concerning which it was Central Historic Central Academy. So I was never told that it was already on the agenda. So I just wanted to clarify that.
We can get lost in he say, she say. I think it would be, I think we should implement the practice of if someone has the ability that we put these kind of things in writing so that we will have something tangible that we will be able to go back to stating that the formal communication was implemented to make to with that specific citizen, whether it be something on email or whether it be a document that is mailed to them, just so that we will be able to cover our bases and have a plan moving forward. Picking up the phone, calling, that's very personal. I'm I'm with it. But sometimes we get back to these points and we have a lot of he say, she say, not saying that this is the case. But in order to eliminate things like that, I think we should come up with a process that it's formally documented so that we can avoid situations like this.
Thank you. Protection to everybody. Point of accuracy for.
Thank you, but I did fill out one.
Here, here, about the process because she clearly stated it, so.
Thank you. Moving on to the um consent agenda.
Actually, Mayor, do you mind if we fall back to item three D real quick, please?
Sure. Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Yes.
Jones, Chief Taylor.
Mayor and Commissioner, thank you um for this opportunity. My apologies for having to um delay. I'm our employee in the month. However, we do not um want to um skip that event and recognize employee for all of the great work that they're doing. I would like to just um let you know the nominee and the winner for employee of the month for the month of October is our planning director, Ms. Lisa Walsh.
If you don't want it, I'll take it.
You'll have to wait mature.
Well, so I I've worked on this several times and it finally took. And so we got her. And so I just really appreciate her, everything she's done here. She's been a big help to me and and Chief Bramford. And um working alongside with planning has made things really cohesive. I know she's been instrumental in changing a lot of our processes and making them better and more streamlined. And uh just look forward to more of it. And we thank you.
Do you want to say a few words, Ms. Walsh?
You know, I don't normally talk a whole lot and I'm not going to tonight. I don't really have the words, but thank you very much. I love you guys. You guys are a great, a great team and I appreciate all of you. I'll talk to you later.
Commissioner Born?
I guess I just have one comment. Um, she doesn't, she doesn't do a good job. She does an exceptional job. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you for all you do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items that we'd like to pull?
Item C.
C. Okay.
H. I.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent is a consent agenda excluding item C, H, and I for consideration and discussion.
Thank you.
If a motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Okay. C. Mr. McMillan? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Krantz first.
Madam Mayor, item C was adopted resolution twenty twenty-three R two fifty-three. A resolution of the city of Palaca, Florida awarding the Public Works Design Bill twenty twenty-three dash thirteen to share construction in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and twenty and authorizing execution of all contract agreements associated with the Benin Board and providing for scrum repairs. Madam Mayor, um, Mr. McMillan has given me some handouts. May I pass them at the side?
Yes, please.
I'm not exactly sure why there's two copies.
Is that for C?
Uh, no, there's the later items. Again, those are for the the later items that were pulled. Um, absolutely. So item C is awarding Cherear the design and construction cost portion of this project for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, nine hundred and twenty. Um, our intent is to move forward with the company knowing that we will have to change the scope of the work based on the proposed facility that's at the airport right now. Their original proposal was for the concept that was provided by Passaro and Associates, a sixty percent design. Um, they will essentially be coming and and working with us to create uh a new concept for the the site that was identified in a previous meeting. That's essentially what this item is for.
Well, what are you doing?
Yes, sir.
Well, based upon, we're not sure. We just talked about a few minutes ago, maybe the police department and maybe the fire department all going up on the one roof. Um, I think we need to to hold off on these particular thing, it's site and design, if we don't know exactly what we're going to do. We don't know exactly what we're gonna do. So to get them in a uh to go out and put a site in design, is that what you just, you kind of just said it, right?
Well, we we have authorized an agreement to purchase a site. And this would be to allow us to design a build out or renovation for that site.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
But it's clearly that we don't understand, we don't know what we're going to do with it yet. We just said about the police department and that's a kind of, you could clarify. The police department would say, well, that's a five year plan, maybe, put them on a five year plan. But if we also just discuss, Commissioner Born just confirmed as well, if we do a campus type build. So are we going to put them ahead of the plan or is that going to be the planet they're gonna design the scope? What scope are we looking for them to do with this? Because you it's obvious that this was the old scope, is what I'm saying. Am I right?
Correct. This scope only encompasses public works operations, correct.
Mr. McMillan, if you don't mind. So this design build contract takes into account the program. So the space utilization that was designed for public works. So even though at the last meeting you authorized a purchase and sale agreement, which includes two existing metal buildings, we still need a contractor to come in and do a renovation of the site uh to meet the program and a renovation of the building to meet the spatial program that was in this solicitation. So we clearly know what we're doing with public works to the point where you've authorized a purchase and sale agreement in excess of one point six million dollars. Uh, now, if you were to do a campus, which I doubt we would end up in a scenario where we put the police department in the industrial park on the most western edge of town, because it's not the best for response times. Uh, they would not be housed in the same building. They'd be housed adjacent to them. So in my mind, um, if I was, you know, overseeing the development of the entirety of this, which I kind of am, um, it, you can take one before the other because they're two different programs. They're two different design.
Well, here's really my real thoughts about it. Because we're searching for a new city manager and don't know what direction they may want us to head in. I don't think we should actually continue with that. I know we just actually put it out on our last meeting. We voted to to move forward in that direction. We just had the chief come up and say we're moving west, everything is moving westwardly. And you just basically said, no, we're not, because it'd be away from it'd be longer response time for moving if we move westwardly. Excuse me, Ms. Mayor.
No, I'm not saying we're.
So now that just, that's contradiction right there. Now, maybe you said that far west, but I I don't think we're on the same page. I know clearly that I'm not with this because we're 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 moving fast on some things, like the move that we were in limo limbo about a little earlier, but now it seem like we're going full speed ahead. Let's move on with the design and the build. And we just talked moments ago about maybe adding a campus. So if this was old, can we pump the brakes a little bit and say, well, hold on, let's discuss this a little further until we actually know exactly what we want. Just ask the chief what he want. And he wasn't, he said he just want a roof over the place. So um is something wrong with slowing down for a little bit? We are in the search for a city manager. I know you assistant city manager, I know your interim, but we're doing a lot of moving and a lot of things that happened and are happening while you're at the helm. And I was just trying to say politely, let's pump the brakes a little bit. Let's slow down until we can get get a grasp on what we really want to do. Um, ah, maybe I'm just the only one that feels that way. And it's not about trying to stifle you or stifle the process of progress of the city. But I would like to say, hold on, let's 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 pump the brakes on some of these projects that seem like when we mentioned certain projects, they go from the bottom to the top real quickly. But there's some projects I've been screaming about for three years and we don't get no traction. That's funny. And that's all, that's why I wanted to put it, because I wanted that discussion.
Commissioner Campbell?
This is a point of clarification. What does the commit, what does the city manager search have to do with this particular item? This is a commission-driven discussion item, not a city manager related question, I mean, item. So I don't understand the declare, I I would like clarity to know why would we have to wait for a city manager?
I I said I would like to wait. I didn't say we had to wait. And I and I got the floor and I pulled his item so that I could say that.
I asked a question.
So I I just told you, that's that's.
Because if you, I just wanted, I asked for clarity so that.
That's what I said. I said we're moving rather fast on some decision that, again, when we talked about items that are on the uh, on the agenda to be moved. This is one. There's another one that I want to speak about as well, that out of out of nowhere, we start doing it. It's just like we we have, we have we have moved rather swiftly on some things, as I said, and slowly on others. And this is one that I said, what's the matter with pumping the brakes when we don't know clear design? We asked the chief just moments ago, how would he like for us, what do you want with his police department? I thought he mentioned move west. I thought that I was clear when I said, well, what about the business part? But now it seems like that wasn't an option. So I would like some clarity. What are we going to do? What are the plans? But at this point, my question was, on the design and bill, it's only for the public works. No campus.
Correct.
Correct.
But did we, did we or was I just imagining, we just talked about maybe a campus for all? Alright.
Okay, uh, and that will get to all the answers, we hope. Commissioner Campbell, are you set? I I know you.
Uh, I would, I refrain from asking because I, my question was.
Do you have anything, any question, any statement?
No, no, no.
Okay. And and maybe I misunderstood, but my, when Chief Shaw was here or up at the, at the podium, he did reference going west. He, I heard ideally for him would be somewhere in the Palm Ave area will be his first preference. And then further west if necessary and within a five year plan that we all have to come up with that doesn't exist as of yet. Um, I maybe again, when I was, before I was elected, heard a discussion about public works moving for many, many years, for several years now. So I don't see this as rushed personally, but that's my take on it. With that said, how would we like to proceed? Do we have any directions? Uh, we we obviously heard um Commissioner Jones. Does anybody else have any direction to give to staff at this point? Based on where we are now.
I think we voted on a previous meeting, correct, that we wanted to do the, we we approved a certain amount that they could uh move forward with. And that's what we were comfortable with. I think it was up to two million, right? Three, three million.
Oh, the total bill?
Yeah, because me, that's what we, that's what we had um approved um up to three million for the site. And I think they came back with a a number underneath three million, right?
Uh, I didn't think that we agreed on that.
Well, we we did, we did, we we stayed up to three million.
We did.
As we move forward, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three R two fifty-three.
Say.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
No.
I was going to say oppose, give me a minute. Okay, thank you. Please wait.
Motion passed three to one for the record.
Thank you. H. Mr. McMillan again, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Krantz, please.
Number twenty twenty-three R two fifty-eight. A resolution of the city of Palac authorizing the purchase of one ninety HD Arbor Pro Lift Trailer from access equipment for a price not to exceed one hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety cents. Pending a financing agreement to be awarded by the city commission at a later date and providing for scrum repairs.
Mr. McMillan?
Uh, so I've handed out some packets. It's funny, my blind, but there's also video included that might help explain this. Um, so as you may know, we we currently have a need to replace our bucket truck. It is a nineteen ninety-seven bucket truck that is not able to be rebuilt. Currently have no ability to service emergency tree trimming or really any tree trimming. Based on discussions previously, the the amount budget was significantly higher than the expense uh that this would encumber the city for uh for a traditional bucket truck. Um, this is a tracked machine that can fit within very small confines. It can be transported by any vehicle within our fleet. And it also significantly increases our current capabilities. Um, our our lift right now gets us up about forty-five feet. This goes up ninety. The reason for selecting a ninety foot lift isn't necessarily height, but capacities. Um, in order to take full advantage of the the swing arcs, and I wish maybe it does show that in there. Um, you know, we we needed the extra length essentially to, yes, please.
You don't need it, why you?
Yeah, it's got some horrible music on it. But the 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 extended length allows us to accommodate all of our staff, um, people of different shapes and sizes. Uh, it's a full range of its capabilities. Uh, this allows us a safer access in in off camber areas such as our cemeteries or a riverfront. It allows us to go into the cemeteries in between grave sites. It allows us to go into the cemeteries in between grave sites. It's deployable from a trailer or from a truck mount if necessary. Um, and again, it is cheaper than a traditional bucket truck with substantially more capabilities. Uh, this is something that was selected by our street superintendent. And, uh, he noticed us and we've done significant research in regards to, uh, options to us. And this is what we came up with as our best solution.
Questions of Mr. McMillan?
So kind of get on it, but I'm like.
Commissioner.
Also.
I just go ask what, what, what was, what would the, um, bucket truck, um, cost?
Typically between a hundred and ninety-seven to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, depending on what we request. Uh, the lower end would be our current, um, height at about forty-five feet, a hundred and ninety-seven, two hundred thousand dollars. If we wanted to increase that, we'd increase the chassis size and the price goes up exponentially after that. So again, this, this, uh, lift height in an equivalent, you know, for a chassis-mounted dedicated truck is close to three to four hundred thousand dollars. But we're able to get the same capacity and a much smaller footprint uh, to utilize within our streets that are off-camber. We have a lot of hills in Platte and, you know, within, you know, our cemeteries that we do have difficulty trimming, even for our vendors. We have to call in a crane that's over a hundred feet to put someone in a basket to trim some of our, our downed trees.
And that'll need to be, um, transported.
So in, in addition to this, there is a, a purpose-built trailer for this that allows it to be deployed, uh, while still on the trailer. Um, so we could tow the, the vehicle, you know, even on the bridge to work on the lights. Um, but yes, it, it would be transported to wherever it needed to be, but it's very easily transportable.
But the purchase includes the trailer.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Mark.
It includes the truck too?
We have vehicles to pull it already.
That's one of the new ones we buy.
Well, we, we, we're not buying any pickup trucks at this time, but, um, at least nothing to pull or anything like that.
But I just, so ninety foot, going up ninety foot in the air, I was trying to tell them what do we service as ninety foot?
We do have a seventy-five foot water tower. And we do have very tall trees. And again, if we were to take them down, it's not necessarily the height, but it's the clearance around what we're cutting down. So if you could imagine some of the live oak trees, they do have a substantial canopy. Um, typically, if, if you have a lift going up very high, you have to get closer to the base of the tree. This allows us to move away from the base of the tree and then still make those trimmings.
We have, we have people that know how to operate this already?
Yes, also they include training.
So how do we do the lights on the bridges? Right now, currently?
Right now, we, we, we contract them out. We can self-service them if we, if we have a lift. Um, typically we, we go through a vendor.
With this, we cut out the need for a vendor?
If there's an emergency, we could, we could deploy this. Um, additionally, we, we mount things on the bridge such as the flags or decorations and things like that, that isn't really economical to use a vendor for, but we've been able to accomplish in-house. Currently, we have no capability doing that.
And my last question is, there was the, it was only one vendor. And oh, Scott, excuse me, one bid. Is that, can you play?
Yes, sir. This is a sole source agreement. This is the only manufacturer that produces this type of equipment that can be deployed from a trailer.
It's the only, only manufacturer that made me.
That does what this does. Correct. Again, there are other tracked lifts that are different form factors. Nothing is as small, nothing is deployable from a truck bed or from a trailer specifically. This gives us more flexibility than the competitors.
But I, is that along with our policy?
Yes, sir, it is. Uh, we allow sole sourcing if we have a justification from them and they have provided the required documentation.
That wasn't included, not my package that I looked for. That's one of the reasons why I pulled it.
I believe it was attached to the agenda item itself.
What you just sent to?
No.
No, that was just a, a, a handout to explain if it did get pulled.
That's all the question that.
Anybody have any further questions?
Make a motion that we approve adopt, I'm sorry, resolution twenty twenty-three R two fifty.
Second.
We have a motion, second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Nay.
Pass three to one.
Thank you. On to, I, Ms. Krantz.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three R two fifty-nine, a resolution of the City of Platte authorizing the purchase of one front-end blunt and front unloading garbage truck with ASL attachment from camper trained embody and for a price not to exceed four hundred ninety-three thousand. Pending a financing agreement to be awarded at a later date and for all scribblers errors.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
So Sunny, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the video, what this is, is addressing several issues that we've got within our sanitation department. Um, this vehicle is proposed to replace within our fleet unit thirty. Just close to twenty years old at this point. Um, it is not a serviceable vehicle. We do hold it in reserve for if we do have a residential truck breakdown. But it's increasingly becoming unreliable. Additionally, we do not have a backup for our commercial trucks. Um, increasingly, we do not have a, a backup for our commercial trucks when we do have a down service event. Requiring us to run the truck essentially for, you know, thirteen, fourteen hours a day. Um, this vehicle with the automated side-loading attachment, um, which we had the video would show. Um, yes, in the email earlier, it's actually in the, uh, bottom of that document there. Yes, there, there should be a link to the video right there. Okay. Um, essentially, th- this is similar to the vehicles that we already have. It is a front-loading vehicle that has an attachment that has integrated controls that allows us to service residential trashcans um, with one person as opposed to the three people that we currently field on trucks. And again, we can utilize this in, in a reserve capacity for our commercial route. Additionally, we would intend to put it in full service as opposed to holding a reserve vehicle right now um, to supplement our collections for our residential. So that would mean reducing the amount of total stops that each truck can do at we, our current level, we're about eight hundred and fifty stops, which is that saturation. Uh, these, these trucks are running consistent overtime right now with our staff. Um, and we're looking to reduce that. Uh, we're not anticipating having any, you know, significant overtime events other than collections at this point. And, and if that's something that we can reduce, it reduces our operating costs. Um, additionally, this allows us to better service the community as regards to bulk pickup. Um, as you may or may not know, uh, we break the city up into two-day collections. So Monday and, and Thursday, they'll do one part of the city and Tuesday and Friday they'll do another. But on Wednesday, our routes are really running the entirety of the city. So three thousand thirty-four customers are completed or at least gone by in one day. This allows us to field extra equipment essentially to make those collections and be more successful in that. Um, again, this is, I think, a step that we need to make with our fleet and moving towards automation. But also increasing the amount of routes that we have with the growth that we've seen in the city, um, and the amount that we're collecting. Which is another reason why we're reporting on the total tonnages that we take in, that we anticipate to report to you. You know, the type of collection and how successful we are in, in increasing our numbers and, and being more efficient with the tools and staff that we have available. Um, so again, we, we have vehicles that need to be replaced. This is an alternative to just buying another rear loader truck. This reduces our overall staffing and allows us to increase our, our, um, or decrease our, our labor to actually complete our jobs.
I want to see what we get, so.
Absolutely, please.
Yes, please.
And it's not Vistaprint, so. I, it, it is. Um, and not shown in this video, the, the front-loading attachment in service is in front of the vehicle. When it goes down the road, they fold it into the back of the truck. So it, it trans, travels down the road just like one of our regular garbage trucks with, without the attachment in front. I do not know. If you wouldn't mind just searching a Carrato can on, on YouTube. I mean, the, the video should be there. Yes, correct. That, that was a link to it. Unfortunately, seemed to be in a perpetual loop.
You'll be able to skip it soon.
One day, it seems to be stuck.
That look like it's got like a, um, a border around that. Like, almost like it's like antivirus is running around.
Correct, yes. Yeah. Well, I, I apologize for the size, size of this video. Um, but I, I hope this illustrates what, what we would be receiving.
See that coming down the street.
I would too.
Some little boy, little girl, something else to see as they wait for our trash collector to ride down the street.
That was kind of it. I think you can go on the YouTube or on website.
Well, I apologize to this little anticlimactic. I was really excited about this. I've been, you know, um.
It's very pretty.
So that's one man operation, what we have?
Yes, sir.
And they get both sides of the street?
Yeah, I mean, we, we'd have to turn around, but absolutely, uh, we've toyed with the idea of, of experimenting with putting two people and having one person pull to the other side. Um, and, and kind of seeing how we, we do have the staff to fully man the truck right now. Um, with being fully staffed, uh, we do have a reserve, uh, refuse collector and a reserve driver essentially that can operate the truck full-time.
So a few minutes ago, it was one guy outside of the truck.
You can operate it from both inside the cab or outside of the cab.
I was trying to see how we're, what we get, what we get. Bang five, bug, man. Sound good, but it didn't look good.
Well.
Go ahead.
Well, it, yeah, it's just like one of the, um, those, um, I guess trucks that they got down it, uh, in, in, uh, Kissimmee, Kissimmee, Florida where, um.
Well, it's close to that.
Yeah, yes. You, you went to the one in Kissimmee? That's similar to it. You operate on both sides and you can use it to load the, the, the loader is transferable, correct?
Yeah, I want to add something. A couple of years ago, we actually ran a pilot test on a side tipping truck. Um, it was a, a pup truck. It was a little bit smaller, but we wanted to make sure that it worked. The difference between that and this, and Mr. McMillan has stated it, this truck has the capacity to go between the residential and the commercial route as a backup. The one we ran before, which worked as a side-loading, only was for residential. So what they found is something that really addresses multiple problems that we're having.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on this topic? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Certainly.
We have a motion and a second to approve, um, resolution twenty twenty-three R two five, R two five nine, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Motion passed, Jameson.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to public hearings. Ms. Krantz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Presented to you for first reading is ordinance number twenty twenty-three thirty-three, an ordinance of the City of Platte, Florida, mending the Platte Municipal Code, Chapter Seventy, Sections One, Fifty-One, Fifty-Two, and Fifty-Three Streets and Sidewalks and Other Public Places as it pertains to the public safety of sidewalks, providing an effective date and providing for scribblers errors.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
So as we discussed in the previous discussion, direction of item, um, we're proposing some modifications to our ordinances. Um, the proposed changes will allow us to enact repairs, uh, on city sidewalks, um, as we need them, as opposed to, uh, requiring direction from commission, while also preserving the ability to file lien against individuals or adjacent property owners who are found to have damaged property or, uh, property within the right of way or sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. Additionally, we worked with the planning director, um, to add in some items that would require, um, vacant property that's currently not developed, um, with exceptions, of course, to construct sidewalks and connect, um, if they do decide to develop at some point in the future or when they do make those developments. Um, and again, this is kind of streamlining the, the process with how we operate and how we need to operate from a liability standpoint. Um, quick response with the sidewalk repairs or replacements is, is necessary, um, to, you know, have, have safe sidewalks for our citizens. Um, as you may know, there's a significant amount of work that needs to be done with our city's sidewalk infrastructure. And again, this, this allows us to follow that process, uh, to be efficient with those repairs.
Thank you. I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Anybody here have a public comment on this topic? Seeing none, blows public comment. Um, any further questions or discussion?
Move.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, where it says it should be determined by the city commission of any repairs. Yes, that's that question. You say to streamline the process?
So if, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, in the reading of that, if, if you were to read it, uh, essentially any repairs that would be required to sidewalk would require the city commission to direct the city manager to reach out to the adjacent property owner to make a repair at their expense. If they did not complete that repair, a commission would then direct the city manager to make the repair at the expense of the city and then file lien against the adjacent property owner. So we are still allowing for that lien process to happen in the event that there's damages created by the adjacent property owner. But this will allow us to maintain the infrastructure within the right of way, uh, at the city's expense essentially.
But the, the decision-making from the commission. I get it, yes. That's the direction we hit. We'll point it out.
We haven't voted.
Let's just want to point it out. See it. Strictly.
Anybody else have any questions of Mr. McMillan?
Nay.
Okay. Do we have a motion? I can't do it. Okay. No motion.
Commissioners, if you're not going to make a motion, um, to approve or deny, um, could you at least give us some direction on this matter?
Does anybody want to offer?
Again, like, uh, Commissioner Jones mentioned, if it, if it takes a voice away from the commission, I'm not, um, in agreement with that, um, at all.
Then we would have to have a motion to deny.
I make a motion to deny.
Second. Can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just for, if there is no motion, that is a motion. We don't have to formally have a motion to deny something. If no one makes or breaks or it dies for lack of a motion. So I don't think that there needs to be a motion to deny because there was no motion made or no, so.
Okay, um, point taken. Um, however, there are some other issues procedurally in here that need to be addressed. So if that's the main issue, I'd, I'd appreciate the commission directing staff and giving some specific direction as to the changes you'd like to see to this ordinance. And then we can bring it back for consideration at a later date.
Sheba.
Oh, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with anything that, um, is put before the commission to take the commission's voice away, um, or what have you in terms of the, the decisions that we make. Um, I'm not, um, friendly, um, to anything along those lines unless the commission put this, put things on the agenda to do that. But if it's coming from staff to, um, put things on the commission, to the commission, to remove the commission's voice, I'm not friendly to that. So that's just my, my, my point.
So may I pose a hypothetical based upon the current ordinance and the proposed ordinance for your further discussion?
Please.
Okay. So, um, if the commission is to regulate the laying of sidewalks and the repair of sidewalks, that means your public work staff cannot make any repairs to sidewalks without an item being agended. That means emergency repairs without an item being. without an item being agended on your agenda, which only happens at best twice a month. So it's just a consideration I'd like you to think about. Now, maybe it's the placement of a lien if we're going to put a lien in place for someone who's damaged a sidewalk. Is there is there some difference between those practices where you may consider a change here?
What have you been doing up to this point? The ordinance is already here and it's been here. So for emergency repairs, what have you been doing?
We make the repair.
So there's a change.
They need to repair without bringing it before the commission or having it agenda.
Correct.
I'm 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 looking for clarification.
So this this came about because your staff pointed out that how we are practicing doesn't match written policy. So we wanted to bring the two in line, and that's what's being proposed to you.
Well, I think that if there's any damages we should know about, know about them. For example, I walked up on a a project being done yesterday and I haven't heard it. I don't know if the commission has been privy to any of it. But this will keep us in a loop. I think this will keep us in a loop. And I and I I don't vote to not be privy on knowing what's going on with these type of things. So I don't know what the rest of the commission, I stand out like it's all done, but I'm just telling you how I feel.
I've already stated my opinion. I mean, if the commission need to be aware of different things that comes up, emergency or what have you, it's in the ordinance. And we have been operating outside of that. So to continue that practice is violating the ordinance and that's that's not good. So let's let's just make sure that we're not violating our ordinance. And staff can't, staff should not.
I think that's what they're attempting to do.
But then with with the the language was to remove the commission's notification or approval, and that's not friendly. Are you good with that?
I think Commissioner Jones appears to agree with that, yes. That's what I heard.
So this was not intended to take any power away from the commission. We were just putting forward a change because the practice, which is practical. I mean, I don't believe it's practical to bring in front of you hundreds of repairs for sidewalks throughout the city throughout the year and to delay those repairs at times three to four weeks. Maybe there is a threshold here where the commission does want to be informed and does want to have the authority to, say, for instance, enforce liens for repairs when it's determined that a property owner or an adjacent property owner is responsible for that damage, similar to how a code case is brought before a special magistrate. And I just offer that as an alternative. I I truly believe it's not practical to have your staff bring forward every single sidewalk repair that may be a little five by five foot section every time and have it on your agenda.
And risk the liability and other issues and complaints from citizens about their sidewalks being disrepaired because they have to wait for this process to unfold. So I I understand what everybody's saying, but I think there may be some compromise here where that's reasonable. I'm just asking, go go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
I'm just gonna say this, we're about to spend two million dollars on sidewalk projects and I want to know where we're spending them at. I don't want to arbitrarily just say, well, you know what? Because I we we get it all the time. You guys voted on it. So what I said here, I'm not voting for. Before we do any, I think we continue to practice like we have been. And you you guys bring it to the commission as this is in the ordinance. So I don't know how much playing that could be.
If if I may point out that the process outlined in the ordinance would not be for the city to make a repair initially. It would be to require the adjacent property owner to make any repairs at their own cost.
But they also could bring it to us, we as we discussed in our last meeting. We did hypotheticals or whatever. So if it's adjacent property owner, their their sidewalk was damaged, not by them, because we could prove that it happened in the middle of the night, someone with a heavy truck turned around and it 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 drive. They damaged that sidewalk. Of course, we're not going to place a lien on them to fix it or make them repair it. That's why it's good to have come back to the commission so that we could hear those things. And and that's why I am with that. So that's the case of course.
Check this out. How about we table this? Give us time to get if you give our ideas so that we can circle back to this. This ain't going nowhere tonight.
No, you disregard.
I didn't.
You're forming myself.
I didn't disregard it. I made a motion. If you don't agree with my motion, don't second it.
You you're disregarding what we were with that.
I mean, because if I have, if I want to look further into this, it provides me the opportunity. This conversation gives me the opportunity to take what I want to have a part of this, or I'm not disregarding. I don't want to take the power away from us. I'm making a motion that we table this, meaning it's going to come back to us for discussion. And again, it gives you the opportunity to do if you want more homework or you can get with staff to put your stuff in. I'm not disregarding you. I just made a motion to table.
We we will have to, we will have to vote. We we just voted on this.
You know.
Well, we need to vote. Well, we need to vote on it because it's on the agenda. We will have to either. If 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 we had a motion and it died for a lack of a second, that's that's one thing. But if it died, then we there's no.
But also, if there was no motion to, if there was, if it dies, you can still make a new motion because there was no motion that was formerly made.
Originally, I had a motion to deny by Commissioner Borum, second by Commissioner Jones, but now your motion to table.
There was no motion.
No motion. The motion just died because there was no motion.
Right. She went to discussion. Right. And so that it died, there is no motion on the table. I'm making a motion that we table it. Yes, that is.
Take a motion, just like the Turk, the madam clerk said, and I did second it.
Yes, the 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 city attorney said that, because they said we had to make a a vote on this to either vote it down. And so I'm motion to vote it down for the request.
And I second, as madam clerk record.
And I may mention as a point of clarity that there didn't, if there was no, she made the recommendation. There shouldn't have had to been a recommendation because there didn't need to be a formal. I know what I'm talking about. So then therefore.
And so here we are now. Let's so for the sake of moving forward, there was a motion in a second. Let me finish, please. There was a motion in a second. We'll vote on that and then we can move on.
No, no, you can't. Because if you were right.
It actually died.
We go on. He wanted to, he excuse me, city manager wanted to add, but the motion died and it don't have any support. So that's that. It didn't have any support. So now, yeah.
So so.
So then Commissioner just made another motion. Well, stop, stop.
There's another motion.
I'm making a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Borum.
I want to ask the city attorney, what is proper at this point? Because we we we're going to have to clean and clear this up based on what happened. So this can be a legal vote.
Um, and just a point of clarification, the the reason I suggested a motion to deny is so you have some finality on the record. What you could potentially do, Commissioner Campbell, is a motion for reconsideration. And at that point, you would be able to open it up for tabling the agenda item to the next commission meeting.
Motion for reconsideration.
We have a motion for reconsideration. Do we have a second? We do not have a second. So that motion also died. How would we like to proceed?
You have a motion that has passed, and so now you need to proceed to the next agenda item.
Thank you.
Onto regular business, discussion and direction. Who's going to speak to this, Mr. Griffith?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Correa. In conversation with you and at a previous meeting, you expressed your desire to commit up to a thousand dollars to Commissioner Jones Unity Day. Myself and Ms. Krantz reviewed the past minutes. There wasn't a formal motion to accept that, so we placed it on here for consideration. We just need someone to make a motion and a second to confirm the allocation of a thousand dollars of the mayor's special event funds.
Okay, as a point of clarity, when we had this initial conversation, it was made, it was mentioned that the commission would have the ability to donate what it is that they desire to any event that has been approved by the commission. Am I?
Correct.
So all of this individuality coming back every time, it's not necessary.
So Commissioner Campbell, we took note of that. We're actually reviewing the policy for approval. That was in conflict with the sequence that city manager homes put in place. I think we're going to have that ready by the next meeting to kind of clean this up. But procedurally, we do need this approval so that we're following our written approved policy.
I make the motion that we approve the thousand dollars for the event.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Number nine, Ms. Krantz.
You is the twenty twenty-four city commission's calendar. In keeping with tradition, this calendar does outline one meeting per month during the summer months. It outlines one meeting per month during the holiday months, November and December. I in assuming this commission would like to keep with that, I'll move on. I do have a question that's highlighted concerning the Jan, the second January meeting in twenty twenty-four. In the past, the city commission has chosen to attend rural county stays in Tallahassee because it ends at two o'clock and then coming back directly to a city commission meeting at six o'clock here at City Hall. Of course, that means you guys travel pretty quickly. Now that we have student of the month on the second meetings of the month, that would mean either one of two things needs to happen, assuming you wish to continue with that meeting. Either the commission comes back by at five by five thirty to attend the student of the month or we move student of the month up to the first meeting in January. Or we don't have this last option, of course, if we don't have the second meeting in January.
What's the pleasure of the board regarding that date in January?
I just really don't like traveling back, coming straight to a meeting because you never know what you may face traveling. So I wouldn't, I don't, I don't want to do that.
Okay, so reducing it to one meeting in January and changing the date of that. Are we reducing it to one meeting in January? I guess is my question. What are we, what are we doing?
That's what I would recommend, commissioners.
I mean, I'm 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 not privy to, I don't, I wouldn't recommend trying to get back after we've had enough.
So are we going to one meeting, just the one meeting in January?
It'll work.
The recommendation?
Yes.
Ms. Krantz, do you need a formal motion to adopt the calendar with the suggested revision?
I'll make a motion that we accept the the agenda, I mean, the calendar as approved with the amendments that we discussed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thanks.
What do I have a question? What do we do in the event that there's not a clear vote for yea or nay?
I can speak to that, I believe. Um, I mean, as to the city's calendar, I believe the chart, the code would trump that you would not continue to meet on the second and fourth Thursday.
No, that's not what's in his question. No. Ms. West.
Your question is if you don't have a clear yea or nay on a vote, it it is the duty of the mayor to clarify who votes yea or nay for clarity of the record. You can't abstain from voting unless you have a direct conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Okay, so there were three yays and there was one non-responding in that case of that vote.
And so in in an instance where you have a non-responsive vote, you can do a roll call. Unless there is, again, a direct conflict of interest, you must vote.
Roll call, please, Ms. Krantz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Justin Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Will Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Rufus Born?
Yes.
Mayor Robbie Craft?
Yes.
Motion passed, James.
Thank you. Number ten. Mr. Griffith?
So this is a hard item. If you're aware, we set aside some funding as just a year for resurfacing of roads, baseballs, stormwater repairs. It's anticipated that's going to have to be well validated, bone marker repairs. On whatever quarter we use my staff. So the house would work is we have a map. Appreciate it. That has a couple of zones and it also has some lines on it. And Mr. McMillan, I agree, you can kind of read over here, zone one, which is in the top left.
Mike, it's not on, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Ms. Krantz. Zone one, which is in the top left hand of the screen, or was. Thank you. That area kind of overlay in that gray hatch, that is an area that would be a candidate for resurfacing. And the majority of the waterline work has already occurred there in the early nineties. So we don't plan on going into that area with a waterline replacement, nor is it included in the eight point two million dollar raise area. Zone two, same scenario, waterlines have been replaced. Those roads are candidates for resurfacing based upon their condition. And the waterlines, we believe, with the exception of Madison Street, there's some crossings there that will have to be done, are done. Zone three, same scenario. That's actually the area that we're in now. I don't know if all of you can see the the red dotted line and the blue dotted line, but generally, the red dotted line closer to Mosley is where our contractor TB Landmark is working on the waterlines. And that project only calls for patching of the roads. What's harder to see, and I'll just generally refer to those roads within that zone three, closer to South Sixteenth Street, Gillis, Oak, Carr, and Diana, is a a dash black dotted line. Those roads are in severely bad condition and we wanted to bring that to your attention because it is just outside the area that you've completed, which is South Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street. So we're proposing that as an ideal location to consider. Another one that does not have a gray hatch over it is generally around Booker Park on North Tenth and Ocean and North Twelfth. Those waterlines have been replaced. They were done in the early nineties with a community development block grant. So that would be another area that would be an ideal candidate. Item B on here is the county's request for four hundred thousand dollars. The joint project between the county and the city, which is two phases of resurfacing and reconstruction from Palm Avenue to Mosley on or Mosley, which is resurfacing on St. John's Avenue. And then from Mosley to the railroad tracks, which is reconstruction, came in about five hundred thousand dollars over budget. We do have two representatives here from the county. If you do approve the allocation of four hundred thousand dollars to that project, which staff is recommending that you do, that's going to leave you about four hundred thousand dollars in resurfacing work for this year for other roads. We're asking that you identify at least ten blocks. You can identify more. Staff would then get with your engineers that are on continuing services. We would fully scope it out and bring an engineer's estimate back to you for you to further refine that list down to your budget.
McMillan, do you have any further nation or any additional comments?
No, this time.
The Mr. Suggs, Mr. Either of you gentlemen?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Terry Suggs, County Administrator of Putnam County. I have Deputy County Administrator J.R. Grimes here tonight, who is the operations manager, who will probably be better informed to answer whatever questions you have. But we certainly be here. So if there's anything you need, I'll be be in the back to answer any questions. Absolutely. But I will certainly be here, so if there's anything you need, I'll be, be in the back to answer any questions, absolutely.
Do you, do you, any, any of you have questions, Mr. Grimes specifically?
I wanna hear what you say, I got, I gotta speak.
Okay.
Um, we bid it out, uh it's a DOT project. Um DOT funded it um at a certain level, I think it was one point two million is what DOT gave. Um the county has an interlocal agreement with the city of Plac to maintain from Palm Avenue to Nineteenth Street. From Nineteenth Street to the railroad is a city street, so um. They wanted to phase it together to save CEI costs and engineering. To where they tied the two projects together and got concurrency from BOT, the actual reconstruction of the road because of the failing subbase underneath it. The engineers advised to remove all of the existing subbase and replace it, and that's why that portion of the road is significantly more money.
What's up, Mr. Grant? And city manager. In this agreement, in a local agreement, it says, whereas in the event that phase one bid exceed five hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. And some change, the city agrees to contribute up to fifty thousand dollars, not four hundred thousand. So I wanna know why we're talking about. Putting in four hundred thousand on that particular road when we have other roadways which just saw need that four hundred thousand dollar. Attention to it, so the agreement says fifty thousand. Not four hundred thousand.
Yes, sir, and um Commissioner Jones, uh I actually brokered uh that agreement. Intent was to limit the city's responsibility. I do wanna put on the record again that this is a joint collaborative partnership between the city and the county. A multi-year effort started as a larger project, we realized we couldn't do the whole road. DOT said resubmit for another grant, they said, we like you guys working together, we're gonna give you some more money. It just so happens that the portion of the road that came in significantly over budget. Is the portion that the city is responsible for maintenance, which is from Nineteenth Street to the railroad. So I think our partners are here and we collectively don't wanna be in a position where we have to come back to you and say, we don't have enough money. Which blocks do you not wanna repair? We wanna get the project done, the money is in the budget. I think the majority of you um were at a meeting on Monday at Price Martin. I walked around and took pictures of the paper on the tables of the citizens that were there. And they identified four out of the five tables, one of the top roads they wanted reconstructed or repaired was St. John's Avenue.
No doubt, but when we start talking about, I mean. I just wanna point it out. That obligation will be fifty thousand dollars. Where this. Is gonna be on our end of it, um. Where, where we gonna, where the four hundred thousand, I don't know how that was determined, how was that determined that it end up, our end of the road end up being the one?
It was, it was, it was bid in two phases, phase one and phase two, phase one being from Nineteenth Street to the rip, from Nineteenth, I'm sorry. From Palm Avenue to the railroad, and then phase two was bid out a separate document. That was from Nineteenth Street. To the railroad, so that eight blocks, so it was bid in two separate categories. The city's portion of that one was bid and it's four hundred thousand dollars over budget. Phase one is St. John's Avenue from Palm Avenue to Nineteenth Street.
It was bigger, what?
It was bitted in two, two separate phases. So it was actually originally two different projects. And then DOT came back and says, can we combine efforts to where we can hire one contractor and one CEI firm to overlook the project? So then when at that time, we combine projects to make it look like a partnership, so we could get additional funding.
I, I got that, and I can appreciate that, but tell me this, uh, Mr. Brown. And I think that people had this question, I know I have it. Why is it taking so long? Is it because the money, this is just for general conversation for the public at this point. Why is it taking so long for us to get that, that complete?
Well, I think, I think the city had some infrastructure that they needed moved inside that, inside that repair zone that we were waiting to, to make sure it would happen. It's also went back a couple of times for additional funding uh because it was totally out the first go around. Um and with the inflated prices, as we've seen, and I mean, that's just from every project we're doing, the prices are, it just inflated. So I think that's kind of been the pause, we're ready to go. What we're doing is waiting to make sure we have all the funding in place to be able to pull the trigger. Um the project's been bitted out, um we've got CEI, we, we've got the CEI firm selected. The contractor's been selected, we're just ready, we just gotta have a fully executed funding agreement.
Which this is not. Full executed funding agreement?
I'm sure.
The local agreement.
It, interlocal agreement, it's just an agreement between the county and the city saying that we'd maintain a portion of that roadway.
Right.
From Palm Avenue to Nineteenth Street.
So, Mr. Griffiths, that, um, I got to attorneys too. So where it says, in the event that phase one bid exceeds. The city agreed just contribute up to, that means nothing. That's my question. We didn't apply anything faster.
No, you, you executed interlocal, you have a limited obligation. Currently, what we're recommending is you increase that obligation so that we can deliver a fully reconstructed St. John's Avenue to the public.
Any further questions, Mr. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Campbell?
I'm confused. The more I'm hearing them, I just.
Would you give a specific question regarding that? The point of confusion?
Just a discussion.
Okay. Commissioner Boren?
Well, the only question I have is. We had the one point two. And it's five hundred thousand over, so was that, how, how did we go from one point two to? Five hundred K, we, we down to eight hundred, eight hundred thousand?
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I'm just trying to understand.
The, the DOT funding is, was it the one point two million, the, the bid is at one point seven? Or one point six, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it, the bid came in higher than the, the one point two million that was allocated in funding.
Okay. Okay, so. That's confusing because, oh, it, it, the bid came in more than the one point two that we, what was allocated.
That's correct, yes, sir.
But, oh, I was told that the. The, that's the five, over, that's the five hundred thousand, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
We're, we're lacking, that's what's lacked above what's funded by DOT, DOT funded us at one point two million dollars.
Okay, okay, I, I just wanna double check and make sure, I know, we, I, I thought we were down to. Eight hundred thousand because they said we were only gonna have four hundred thousand, we're gonna allocate four hundred thousand. And we're gonna only have four hundred thousand to identify ten blocks.
Right.
That's what I understood.
He just said that.
Yes.
So. And that's confusing. In my opinion, it's confusing because. What we, what we, what we, what we just went over, we said we had one point two, we were gonna. The uh, we lost five hundred thou- well, we, over, over five hundred thousand allocated. We got four hundred thousand that we were gonna approve tonight. And we will only have four hundred thousand to identify ten blocks, so.
Okay, you, you're talking about two sets of numbers, Commissioner Boren, so maybe I can provide some clarity there.
Then we, we wanna talk about one set of numbers, the one point two.
Could I, could I go over it one more time, maybe it would help, uh and I'll try not to mix the two. So your budget. Between two line items, you have approximately eight hundred thousand dollars for road work in better place. If you approve an additional four hundred thousand allocation to this city-county project. It'll leave you four hundred thousand dollars in your budget to do other roads. Um this county is only asking for four hundred of the five hundred because the other one hundred, it's a little less than that actually. Is on their portion of the project, portion they're responsible for by interlocal agreement.
But the bid, the funding from DOT was from one point two mil and the bid came in at one point five, and so that's.
That's one, one, six and seven.
So that's like that five hundred. Amount, so that it's the two different sets of numbers in a sense, although we're asking that four hundred of that eight hundred thousand be moved to this project if the. If the commission agreed to that.
Yeah, I understand that, but I, I like to see, uh you know, I just kinda like to see how. The numbers play out because when I have to try and come up and try to figure it out. Without knowing. How the number got from one point two to, to, to this number, it kinda. I have, I'm, I'm, I'm voting on something that I need to understand, that's what I'm saying.
So, so may, maybe I wasn't clear, and I do apologize, okay, okay.
Four hundred thousand to the project, but you know, we, we're told that this is the, the DOT. Grant that the city was awarded at one point two. And we were to give. We are, we are to give award the four hundred thousand for that section of, of, of St. John's Avenue. So that the county and the city can complete from Palm to Eleventh Street, correct?
Does a railroad track, yes, sir, yes, sir.
So. My, my only concern was that I, I did not understand how we went from one point two to. Four hundred thousand. I got, uh, you guys just explained it, it was not.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's nice.
Thank you.
We, we have, we have to put numbers together, so that's what, what, what kind of.
Excuse it, I'm, and if, if I gotta vote on it, I need to understand and know how we got here.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Jones?
So eight hundred thousand was to be used on. The map that you showed us a few minutes ago, that correct?
Not on its entirety, but those are the roads that we're asking you to consider to give us direction on additional roads for resurfacing or reconstructing.
Right, so. So now. Out of the eight hundred thousand, the county is asking for four hundred that to be used on St. John's Avenue. So we would have to scrap some of those roads. That we had eight hundred.
So, in a way, but I, I think words are important here. The county is delivering a city project. The county as a partner is working and delivering a city project. They have no obligation to permit, design, administer, oversee. Be here tonight to ask for our money to reconstruct the city's portion of St. John's Avenue. So, we really, they're, they're here at my request, I asked them to be here uh because they're partners in this project. And you've got a project that you collectively as an elected body programmed years ago. It just so happens when it's being delivered, it came in over budget, which seems to be the norm nowadays, unfortunately. And for us to complete it, we need to reallocate funding from other areas.
That's my case in point on the two hundred thousand dollar lift. So we'll take money from places like roads that need to be done to buy lift. I just wanted to make that clear and, and say that, so you will understand what I'm saying. Four hundred, we had eight hundred thousand dollars on a street project, now it's down to four hundred thousand, because we don't, of course, we're gonna give you the four hundred thousand. Because we don't wanna be, it won't, we don't want it to be said that the city balked on St. John's Avenue, because that's what it would be. So, I just wanted to make, clarify where our money's.
Madam Mayor, can I make a clarification? If you don't mind. From Nineteenth Street to the railroad track is a city road, you're not giving the county four hundred thousand dollars.
What I was gonna say.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Yeah, I understand what I'm saying, so, no, tell me stop, please, Madam Mayor. No, no, no. I, I wanna say this, that's not what I was saying. So I wanted to put the words, put words in my mouth, what I'm saying is that eight hundred dollar allocation, we, we just said we got it, but. By the way, we need to put it over here, I'm not saying that we owe you guys anything, I said, I don't wanna be the commission that says. That people will say that we balked on the project, the St. John um Avenue project, I know it's a collaborative effort. Two things I point out, two things I pointed out is what the agreement says and what we're gonna end up doing. So it's nothing much you got, Mr. Grimes, and you guys come up here, I, I appreciate that, but I wanted to point it out. An agreement said one thing, but we're actually doing something else. Thank you for the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes, do you have any further information?
Yeah, and I'm just going back to what was read, it said in phase one, the project, the city was gonna allocate fifty thousand dollars, is that a correct statement? Okay, phase one of the project is from Palm Avenue to Nineteenth Street. The a- area phase two was a reconstruction of St. John's Avenue. So if I'm speaking correctly to Mr. Commissioner Jones's terms, the county should be down here asking for the additional fifty thousand dollars. And the, and the phase one portion of this project, so it's not, we did not come down here tonight to ask you for that. We came down tonight to present to the commission to repave the city portion of St. John's Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, with all of that said. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second all in favor? Any opposition? Thank you, it was unanimous.
Mistress Mayor, thank you for that, um I would ask that uh if you do have some priorities for road projects that you state them at this time. Um so that Mr. McMillan and his staff can go back and work with an engineer to scope those out and keep those projects moving forward.
So, did I ask, Madam Mayor, may I have a floor, ask for it? So, the last time we did a project with the road resurfacing, it was two hundred fifty thousand dollars, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So now. We budgeted like eight hundred thousand, but now it's gonna be.
Roughly four hundred.
So we did intersections at that point, and that's probably what we're gonna end up doing. The remainder of this part, the resurfacing.
Well, I, it depends on the road, but eh we, we will come back with prices if we're directed to, to select out of these, these areas. Um as Mr. Griffiths has said before, you know, depending on, on the quantity, we, we kinda wanna focus our areas and. Try to concentrate that funding would be the best option.
So the purpose of clarity and part of clarity. Um people may thought I was going on a tangent, that's what I was speaking on, those road projects that the priority goes from the bottom and. It depends on what project it is, it stays at the bottom, some of these other projects escalate very quickly and we as this commission do approval. Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you. On to number eleven.
We, we still need some roads, please, otherwise it's back on your agenda.
We have provided a table with sections outlined in each zone.
And I can make a recommendation and I'm gonna overshoot, and when we bring back estimates, you'll be able to better value which road segments you'd like to prioritize. So if, if you entertain it, I'll suggest a couple areas.
Please, please, at least bring them up.
I would suggest that we uh look at scoping and getting an engineer's estimate on zone one in entirety. So everyone's had the map in front of them.
I have, I, I'm, I'm looking at zone one.
Okay, um and then also zone two. And then the northeast quadrant of zone three, generally bounded by South Seventeenth Street. South Fifteenth Street, St. John's Avenue, and Krill. Those are the three areas I would suggest starting with.
Can I be more specific?
Yes, sir, please.
Zone two. Olive Street. From seventh to tenth. North Fourteenth Street. From Madison. To Washington. And Twentieth Street, where we have the roads that's caving in.
So that would be from set Bronson to Washington?
Bronson to thing that's olive. Love, yeah.
Uh I think it runs one block further, yeah.
Olive. That's, I think that's olive.
Washington's north of Olive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any further specifics?
Those are specifics.
Okay, does anybody else, Commissioner Boren, Commissioner Campbell, have anything more specific?
Uh also, in the, in the uh zone one, any remember we spoke about those uh speed bumps? If, if they, those. In that area.
Yeah, that um.
Would that be something that we could address?
If we were to address that, we'd wanna look at the entirety of zone one for resurfacing.
Commissioner Boren?
Okay, on, on some of these areas where. They intersect um with the housing authority, can, uh how we approached the housing authority? Or any? Any um? Assistance or contributions for? Any assistance or contributions for those roads?
No, sir, but we can if given the direction.
That's all.
I would, I would like to make a recommend, I mean, a motion to that the city approach the housing authority for the areas that we're trying to improve the roads to see if they can kind of give, help give some contributions.
Do we need a motion for that recommendation?
Can I make a couple comments about the sections that were suggested? Please, Mayor, just was.
Yes, we have a motion on the floor. That's what, and I was asking, Ms. West, do we need to make a motion for that recommendation?
Motion or direction?
Just mentioned road segments.
I didn't.
I like, I like, I like to give direction to city manager to approach the housing authority for the areas where we're doing the improvement to see if they would like to help contribute to some of the improvements.
Mr. Griffiths?
Need a second?
No.
Well, is that by consensus of the commission? Because I don't have anything in your recommended areas that includes the housing authority right now.
Some of these don't border.
I didn't get a confirmation that you all collectively wanted to do zone one.
Yeah, I mean, just, just zone one. Yes, I, I, I agree with that.
Okay.
I, I think we all agree with it. Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Jones, any different opinions on it, or different thoughts?
Personally? And zone one is pretty much James A. Long.
Yes, sir, with the exception of North Twentieth.
Only problem I have about that is the speed bump, so. But I'm like Commissioner Borm, I would like to see PHA have skin in the game before we spend taxpayer dollars and and, and the community, and they don't want to invest as well with the resurfacing and the repairing of their streets.
Okay, so is the consensus that we want, we want, that's our recommendation to approach the housing authority to see what they can contribute or not to this to this projects, these projects. Is that what you're saying as well? Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I have three areas. Olive from Seventh to Tenth Street. North Fourteenth from Madison to Washington. Twentieth from Bronson to Washington, but that's now captured in the entirety of zone one. So that is the third area. The first two I mentioned, Olive Seventh through Tenth, and North Fourteenth Madison to Washington Street. One falls within the raise grant area and also the project area for community development block grant stormwater improvements. It's highly likely these improvements will be torn up in the next three to five years. The other, which was Olive from Seventh to Tenth, has yet to have the water lines replaced and the funding for that has not been identified. So it is likely that that improvement could be torn up in the next three to five years. We can continue as directed. I just wanted to put that on the record. When we bring the estimates back to you, you may direct us to identify some other roads.
You know, those road reps, did you say the ones beside the Eighteenth Street? Beside Blackdale New?
Yeah, that was the one I was referring to as the top right or northeast quadrant of zone three, which the water lines are complete and it's a continuation of what we've already done on South Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street. So if it pleases the commission, I'd, I'd really like to add that just to have the engineer scope it and give you an estimate for consideration.
Makes sense. Any additional feedback, comments?
I, I agree. That's what we discussed previously.
Thank you for the direction, Commissioners.
Number eleven. Scheduling workshop regarding to the charter review. In twenty twenty four.
I have, the commission asked for me to look for dates between January and March, and please forgive me for putting twenty twenty three. I haven't got used to saying twenty twenty four yet. Um, but I was looking at some January and February, March dates. I had picked January eighth, um, January eighteenth, February fifth, February fifteenth, March fourth, and March twenty fifth. Mainly because those dates don't have a commission meeting, mainly because they don't have travel. And the voluntary boards don't meet on those days. January the eighth is a Friday. January eighteenth is a Monday. February fifth. Oh, I'm sorry.
Tuesday.
I need to scroll down. Sorry, January eighth is the Monday, my bad. January eighteenth is a Friday. February fifth is a Monday. February fifteenth is a Thursday. It's the third Thursday. March four is a Monday. March twenty fifth is a Monday.
Does anybody have any dates they want to put forth? Those possibilities?
Unflexible.
I'm sorry, what?
Unflexible.
Okay. I, I'm flexible too, especially when there's so much notice, I'm fine. So does anybody have any dates that are not? I don't know if we're going to back into this or what, but what, what, do we want to do this in January? First of all, stop there. I'm asking the question.
This is for the workshop?
Yes, for the charter.
I think so, because we want to, January. What about December?
I was asked to bring back dates from January to March.
Why is that? Why not December? I mean, I'm asking now.
Yeah, we decided, we all decided that we should just do it in January as opposed to trying to squeeze it into this year.
Well, because there was no need for the rush, being that we were not trying to put anything on the ballot.
For the twenty twenty four election, it's not going to make that.
It can.
No, it really can't.
It can't. If we only want to do it addendum. I mean, Mr. Watts said it himself, same guy we had in here to give us direction. If we did not want to do a full charter review, but we want to actually had, have an action item on the ballot, which two items could have been on the ballot that I'm really concerned with and I'll publicly say it. I think that we should workshop it sooner, sooner than January. I mean, what's, what's the precedent that we can?
I think the direction that we gave to them was to come back with those dates. So if that's something that you would like for consideration, make it. That, that's the reason why they gave us the dates that they gave us, because that's what we directed them to do.
So I came back and said, is there any problem with December?
And I think again, the discussion was basically that why we said bring it back dates, bring back dates beginning in January was that because we knew we wouldn't make the election in twenty twenty four because there has not been, to anybody's knowledge, a charter review, probably almost since its existence. There's no documented knowledge that this charter has ever been reviewed. There is no anecdotal knowledge that it's ever been reviewed. So given that, we assume the scope was larger than just a couple of items and that we should do a full review, given historically that doesn't appear to have happened. And so therefore that would require more time and it would not make the twenty twenty four election. By the time we came up with dates, we appointed people, the committees met, so on and so forth. It was going to take a longer period of time. I said, no, I said, I said, if we were going to appoint people to a committee, I said, if we were based on our conversation at the workshop, I didn't say we have a credit, we do not. So I think that was the rationale behind moving it into those, picking a date in those first three months of the new year. Am I correct, Commissioner Borm, Commissioner Campbell?
All right.
Thank you.
But then again, if he has the rec, I mean, I would want to know the reason of wanting to move it and if that's a legit reason to bring it forth, then we can take it for consideration.
What is his pleasure?
Well, because due to the fact what the next item that we're going to end up talking about, and that's the city manager search. Currently, we have a structure where it's commission, city manager, and everyone else reports to the city manager. So. I've seen in other charters where it's structured, commission, city manager, city clerk, city attorney, and they all report to commission. That is one part of the charter that I would like to see changed in our charters. So that's not an entire review that need to be done, but that structure needs to be changed based upon history and what's going on now. Because depends on the conversations that we have in this next agenda item, I think is very important. And you guys may, may not feel that it need to go on the agenda, but because of that structure, and it's been like this for so long here, we haven't had a charter review, just like the mayor just said. I think that we need to have that amended quickly. So that's, that's my focus. Any thoughts on that?
Anybody else wondering?
If, well, so, so that's, that's your pleasure to, to move forward with trying to make that change prior to the end of this year before we go into.
So that we could get that, make that addendum to the charter and we have to move quickly, so time is of essence.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we will have time to the notice, the notifications and everything, but I mean, I, I, I hear what you're saying and I I agree with some, you know, some of the things, what, what you're saying, but yeah, I'm not sure if that's going.
Legal, how would that work?
The timeframe to be put on the twenty twenty four ballot, we would have to have it into the supervisor of elections no later than sixty days. He did request, when I spoke to him, additional time to make sure there were no illegalities, opposed language. But if you're going to take a piecemeal approach to the charter review, you know, those deadlines stay the same.
So, just going on what Mr. Watts said in front of us, I asked him specifically if you guys remember, and I, I made calls to the supervisor of election as well, and I wanted to share that with the commission, that's it. So my pleasure would be to bring, come together this workshop earlier than January. So if we could see some dates in December.
So what will be the sixty day?
So it's a November election, that would put you back to September of twenty twenty four, early September. So really, mid-August, at the very latest.
I, I don't either. I think of what you were properly.
Yeah, well, can we, can we, we, we have consensus that we will diligently work on it, at least reviewing it. The piece, pieces of it, not entirety, because the entirety, we know for sure that we won't get through the entire charter.
Commissioner, if, if you have some priority, some things you would like to priority, I would say present them with the priority, priority you, you wish to see, and then let's come to a consensus and relate to that. And then we can move forward with the rest of the charter.
Right.
Sunny, could you bring back up the names, please?
Please, Sunny.
I'm, I'm flexible. I just don't want to workshop on a Friday.
So in January?
I'm just stating, don't want to do it.
What, what page is that, son?
It's going to be different. Mine's two sixty nine, mine includes edits. January eighth, just a little tidbit of a fact, since I am the clerk, if you will indulge me, it's the city of Black's birthday.
So can we have a home? January seventh?
Uh, that's a Sunday. No, sir. The eighth.
I didn't say that. I said, I don't want to meet on a Friday. I'm flexible with the other days. So January eighth, let's go. That's the birthday. Why not bring up this charter?
Sounds fine to me. January eighth, is that the consensus?
Do we want morning, afternoon, evening?
Well, your wife came from home. She can have her anniversary event here.
No charges. It's, it's actually on the sixth and this eighth is on a Monday. So hope, I mean, I guess, I guess we can. If y'all want to meet on eight. Yeah, we can meet on eight.
Then what, what time are we looking at?
Right out of Bushy Tale. Early.
Early, will that occur? Okay, is that for the public's benefit?
What she got planned. I might, might, might not be here.
Probably a smart call. Is that for the public accommodating? Ten o'clock? Most people work. I don't have a problem doing ten AM, but I'm just wondering if that's fear of the community.
Ten o'clock.
Um, is, 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 well, if, if it's a normal business day, it might not give the general public who work, people.
Take off. We got enough time. We gotta do it.
Ten, ten, but you know, whatever is the will of the commission, but it's just, you know, because I know a lot of people complaining about other agencies having meetings early in the morning, whatever.
Hey, so four thirty, five o'clock?
I mean, if y'all want to do ten, we can, I mean, we can try.
The consideration.
Saying four thirty sounds fear to the community to me, that's all. I know it's your anniversary, I'm sorry. But we are here.
The only thing that I just, and I'm going to say it now, we have a tendency of when we have later meetings, that if they go long, we tend to rush and complain and giving the severity of this matter, I would request that if we do a later meeting, that we be prepared, because I don't think that this is going to be something that's going to be a simple task for us to address. And I understand general public and we would want the general public to be present, but I do believe that there is a ample enough time that if someone wished to attend, that they would be able to. But again, I'm here for the people, so if we need to do it later, but I do want us to be mindful if we do do later, I don't want to hear no complaining.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I said publicly, what about the staff? So they, they would like for you to be early in the morning and then, but they, we consider them as well, so. Most of our meetings are at night, so can we have one to be considered of all the time that they spend nine o'clock at a meeting? I think that's.
I mean, we've had workshops throughout different times for different things. So we've had morning workshops, we've had midday workshops, and we've had evening workshops. So I, I don't think that we're doing ourselves an injustice by considering entertaining a workshop during the day earlier than four or five.
I don't have a problem either way. I just thought we want, want to mention including the citizens, but the majority of citizens, but whatever the group prefers. So again, what is the majority? What is the consensus?
I'm, I'm flexible at this point. How, how we all are willing to proceed, we just need to make it happen.
We have one ten. How many people want it at ten AM?
If they want to do it at ten, let's, let's do it at ten. We can give consideration to the, the staff.
Okay, I guess the consensus is ten AM. Thank you. Thank you. January eighth at ten AM. Number twelve. Commissioner Campbell, um, Commissioner Staff Response to Public Comments.
I just wanted to bring that up for discussion, because I know the last couple of meetings we've had, that's some disagreement with the way that we conduct that portion. And in research, I've seen where a lot of different things take place during that you have some who shy away from going back and forth in exchanges. So I just wanted to bring it up so that we as a commission can kind of have a conversation to see what we would like to have. Of course, we definitely want to take in consideration recommendations from law, but even with Robert was a border, we know that there are also, that's just one method of how to conduct a meeting. So I would like for us to really just discuss what it is that we want to see, what it is that we want to respond to, let staff respond to. So overall, I just wanted to have that discussion.
Commissioner Jones, do you have any thoughts or input? Commissioner Borman, any thoughts?
No additional thoughts. I mean, we, I think we've talked about how, I mean, we did have it earlier on in the, in the process, and I think it got moved. So just what Commissioner Campbell was alluding to, so we just want to keep it at, at, at that in terms of having it moved up to the front and give the citizens a chance to be able to come in and have their there are any questions they may have to the commission or, or staff during the staff response. Because if we move it up to that point, they don't have to wait, forget about, uh, try to remember what, what we talked about.
And I, Commissioner Campbell, is that, I'm not sure that that was what you were saying.
That's not really what I was saying.
I thought you mentioned that when they.
The recommendation that came is that during recruitment, we don't take, we don't have any dialogue that we listen and we allow the citizen to, um, to state their claim or whatever it is that they come before the commission. And we are not to make any responses until a set time, which is during staff. But again, my concern was it said staff response, and it didn't give the commission the opportunity to address some questions that may have come before us, directed to us generally. So that's what, that's what my recommendation came in, to have a discussion to see. Because again, I'm not opposed to listening and then responding at a given time, but as it was stated during that present time, it was staff response and not commission slash staff response. So it can be a simple fix. I just want to see if that was something that would be friendly, giving us the opportunity to respond as a commission and not just solely our staff.
Um, I'm, I'm in agreement with that, but then when we talk about the, the public comment piece, generally, uh, you, 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 public comments, people don't generally, generally respond to that. They just, the community come in, they'll make their comments and then that's it. That's all part of the, uh, Robert's Rules of Order in terms of how you engage. You're engaged with things that are placed on the agenda, uh, as it relates to whatever their issue or concern is. Those are the things you will have dialogue with, so. That's, that's what, that's what I understood.
Okay, so in, in summary, we have public comments, um, just to try to add to Commissioner Campbell's. Um, we do have public comments. It's in the beginning, closer to the beginning of the agenda. And then the number twelve was added, it said commission staff response. So we want to keep that commission piece, not just staff.
Of course, I'm not wanting to go the back and forth exchange, but sometimes when the person asks us a question, this is, is simple just to give a simple answer. We don't have to go in depth about it. We all, we know that we don't take official action during that opportunity. But then again, give us the opportunity to address something if we feel the need. We've had said in several meetings where we've just said and listened and we didn't have a response. But in the event that we do have a response, the agenda does not allow or award the commission to make a statement. It only said staff. So I simply make the request that we allow staff slash commission, giving them the opportunity during their three minutes to give them their three minutes. Let everyone else who has their three minutes, give them their three minutes, but then again, immediately being able to respond to their concerns. If there is a need for.
So that, that, that was kind of two pieces where the, the commission is also given the opportunity to respond to any questions directed to them during public comment, after all the public comments, but that portion of the agenda would move up, as you suggested, right under public comments. So.
That's happened before, but it was just.
So, do we kind of have that last recommendation?
I, I think that's great. It gives you an opportunity to engage with the public and respond to specific requests. I will tell you that this is an unusual feature in local government agendas. There, that is not usually an agenda item for local governments to have a, a specific section carved out for staff or even commissioner response. Usually you have public comment, it usually is three minutes. There usually is not a dialogue that goes back and forth, because what happens is it, it really drags out the public comment section. Some jurisdictions have time limits on public comment. I don't think that's really the issue. It's really more the engagement back and forth, but this is a good solution. I, I will add from my personal perspective that having the members of the public direct their questions directly to staff is not really appropriate. That really should go through the mayor and at the mayor's discretion, uh, she can direct staff to answer. But what, what we're seeing now is we're having almost a confrontation of sorts between the public and staff. And that's, that's not helpful for the professional image of the city.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that, that was the recommendation. Thank you.
And also with the recommendation of that, and I'm not sure when it was moved. But I would like to see the public comments go back to where they originally were. Because again, that allows the, the public to come in, make their comment, and then let them leave if they so decide to. We, I know we had discussion about moving and keeping, trying to keep as many people in the chambers before is why it came after all of the administrative reports and things of that nature, but I would like to see it go back up earlier in the agenda as it used to be, just so that we can go ahead and get that out of the way.
So after public recognition perhaps, and before city manager administrative reports, is that what you're thinking?
Wherever it was before, I want to say it was.
Madam Mayor, I, I don't agree with that one, because at lea- at least you have. I can see.
The, and again, the reason that we moved, because we were trying to keep more people in our meetings when we originally had the discussion to move it, but I don't see, I mean, it really, they're gonna stay, they're gonna stay, they're gonna leave, they're gonna leave. I say, just go back to getting it out of the way, and then if they so desire. That's just my, if it happens, it happens. If it doesn't, it doesn't. I was just making the recommendation.
I think where it is, is early enough, because you don't want, you don't want, you don't want people here for public recognition to hear something if it's really negative or what have you. I don't.
It could certainly go south.
Right, so right where it is, I think that's, that's a perfect place and then we respond.
Was it, I'm just, but when you got people here, it could really, it could really, uh, put a bad.
Function is, it's not every meeting is not, not gonna be cookies and cream. Sometimes people, it, it, just the nature of it's beast. They're gonna hear it. If they stay, they're gonna hear it if they're leave. So if that was just a recommendation, if you don't want to go along with it, I was just giving my reasons of, and the reasons of why we moved it. We didn't move it because of public recognition and presentations. We didn't move it because of that. We were moving, we moved it to keep people in our meetings longer than what it was that they were here for. That's why we moved it. It had nothing to do with public recognitions and presentations. Anyway.
Okay.
Do we go on?
We can go on now that you want to go.
Um, yeah, okay, please. So at, um, again, at this point is the consensus to leave the public comments where it is and then below it, put the opportunity for commission staff comments. Is that the majority consensus? And then we can move forward onto the next item, which is the Discussion Direction Update City Manager Search. Mr. Slaven?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, uh, I think you know who I am. I'm Bob Slaven. I represent Slaven Management Consultants. We have for the last, uh, uh, few weeks been conducting a, uh, national recruitment for a city manager of, uh, Alatta. That effort has resulted in, um, twenty-one individuals, uh, submitting resumes for the job. One of those folks has withdrawn. In the process of, of attracting those candidates, we use several, um, resources, including, uh, placing announcements with the International City County Management Association, Florida Legal Cities, organization called GovJobs.com, Local Government Historic, Historic Network, Legal Women in Government, National Forum for Black City Administrators, and then our outreach, um, uh, work that we did. The, um, as I mentioned, we've got twenty-one responses. When I wrote that letter that dated the eleventh, I wasn't comfortable that we had sufficient people, applicants who met the qualifications the, uh, commission had discussed early on. I'm now of the opinion that we do. We've gotten a couple of extra ones and I've spent some time with, uh, some of the applicants, and I feel that we've got enough to go forward with. The other issue that was concerned, concerned to me when I wrote that letter on, uh, January eleventh was the, uh, application of a, of a county employee for the job. From the very, and, and I need to emphasize that there has been absolutely no, uh, communication between your, uh, acting city manager and me since he applied for the job. Prior to that, as you recall, he was, uh, assigned to me as liaison. But in no condition was, did I share candidate information with him. But he certainly, he certainly, or his sole purpose was to serve as a conduit between me and you folks as, uh, so.
That Mr. Slaven moved back and, and not breathe directly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what that crackling is. He's a little bit too close, sorry.
I thought it was a cold. So, and then the point I'm making is that he, uh, he withdrew his participation in the process. And, and I respected, uh, that and couldn't have functioned otherwise with that. Uh, can you not hear me now? Okay, is it really, it's, the green light's on, is it on? Okay, the, um, other concern I had when he applied for the job is from the very beginning of the search, I was led to believe by, uh, people who were telling me what the, the situation was at the time, that there would, would be no internal candidates. And on that basis, I, um, when I, um, uh, was recruiting for the job, that question always comes up. And I was honestly able to tell folks, no, there are no internal candidates and added, there will be no internal candidates. Some of the twenty-one applicants, uh, applied, uh, maybe not as a result of that situation, but certainly that some of them are the ones that asked the question. So what I needed to know, uh, uh, from you folks, uh, and, and still do is, is this an open job? Or, uh, is there still an opportunity for outside candidates to be seriously considered for this job and selected for it? Uh, if that's the case, then I'm ready to move forward. If that's not the case, then as I suggested to the commission through, in that letter, that, um, there needed to be something that will relieve the pressure of the internal candidate. I was getting phone calls from people who I have no idea how they, uh, learned that there was an internal candidate. It certainly wasn't through my offices. But I was, uh, we lost one candidate who told me basically that, uh, he not only knew there was, but that he assumed that person was, had the lock on the job. And, uh, uh, at least one other who I had been asking, uh, to take a look at the job, told me, not that he thought that the job was locked up, but that there's an internal candidate and, uh, he wanted to wait to see, uh, what the commission's reaction to that, uh, to that fact, not necessarily to the candidate. Yeah, so I need to make sure when I leave here tonight that in order to serve you, uh, your interests, uh, in the best manner possible, that I know the job, we're dealing with a job that's open. Of the twenty-one responses, um, I, uh, the criteria that we use in the job profile for, um, for the, uh, minimum qualifications were bachelor's degree and, uh, the equivalent of a bachelor's degree and ten years of increasingly responsible management experience in a local government or public agency of, uh, consistent in, uh, and, um, uh, complexity to this one. And there was an equivalency there, so. Somebody had a higher degree than a bachelor's, uh, and maybe a little less than ten years. I use that as an equivalent. If somebody, uh, had, uh, well, I don't think anybody that applied had no degree, but if somebody had no degree, but they had twenty years of very successful experience as a, as a municipal manager, I would want to bring that person forward. So of, of, of the, of the twenty-one people who applied, eight, at least eight met those minimum qualifications. One withdrew and twelve were not qualified. With the eight, and, and I've got, some of them look, appear to be better qualified than others, and we've done no background work on them as yet. But of those eight, I feel comfortable that there's at least four or five, uh, in addition to the internal that would meet the qualifications. One of the next steps in the process we use is once those well-qualified or potentially qualified candidates, uh, surface, that we send them, we spend time with, a lot of time with them on the phone, uh, and sometimes virtually, and sometimes when we have an opportunity to do it in person. But among the steps in the process is to have each of them complete a very extensive, uh, so what would I call a supplemental questionnaire, and that questionnaire is usually about twenty-four, twenty-five questions long. But it's geared to, tied to, if you will, um, tailored to your recruitment profile and the needs of the city. And you'll see it. Um, it, uh, it's a narrative, uh, but it, it asks questions about some of the issues that, that, you folks talked to me about when I was here before and what I saw on, on my tour of the city. And it goes into, it asks not only whether they've had experience in those areas, but what that experience was and what the result of it was. And again, it's narrative and what that does, it does a couple of things. It gives me some insight into how well they really are qualified. But it also provides you folks with a lot of, um, information about these folks and what they've done during their career. And, uh, and it explains to the, uh, in narrative form why they're interested in the job. It also asks some questions beyond the, um, more tailored ones about their, um, experience in, in, in professional life. If they've, um, left jobs, uh, of, um, uh, without, uh, uh, without, uh, I'm sorry, involuntarily left jobs, we'll want to know about that. If, uh, there's anything in their, um, uh, background that we're going to find, do they want to tell us about it first? Uh, and explain it. Um, what do they expect in terms of compensation? Not negotiating a deal, but at any rate, uh, so what you, what you will get next from me, assuming that you're in agreement that we ought to move forward now, is a packet of, and oh, and in addition to that, we do very in-depth background and, uh, work on these folks. It includes all of the normal things you'd think, uh, uh, of credit, criminal history, uh, civil history, national, uh, uh, criminal history, uh, the, uh, educational checks, any credentials they say they have, we validate. We check the National Sex Abuse Registry. Um, we certainly do, um, referencing, um, and, and they do, uh, we look into social media, uh, history with, with folks. What we get is a pretty good idea of whether these people are who they say they are and they're, and they're. history with folks. What we get is a pretty good idea of whether these people are who they say they are and their credentials are validated. So but what we don't get and what can only get when you meet them is whether or not they fit what you're looking for in a manager of a person to manage the city. We can tell you what they do and whether they've been successful. We can tell you how they say they do it. But whether they fit this organization or not is a $64,000 question and that can only be determined through interviews. So where I am with this at this point in this meeting tonight and the experience and seeing how this issue has come up earlier in the meeting, gives me some pretty good indication that the job is open. And that's not to say that I heard anything that would cause me to think that your internal candidate is not would not be considered. But that it is helpful, if I can honestly say, and I need for you to validate this, that it's open and that people who qualify stand a chance of being hired here and that it's not a done deal. We can finish this process. I did a little calculation earlier today. What I need to do, assuming you agree that we move forward, is get this questionnaire to candidates. We get it out within the next couple of days. It is a document that we ask people to give some serious thought to and spend some time with them. We certainly tell them that you'll be seeing it. So it shows you what they, how they write, how and how they present their information narratively. And so we would get that out and I'd ask for it back maybe about by the 25th. If it went out later this week, we'd get it back by maybe the 25th. I would then do the in-depth background work on those folks who meet, who continue to meet, to appear to be well-qualified. And we could hold interviews here as early as early mid-December. End of, we could do it in November or late November, but that's Thanksgiving and that would be a problem. Christmas comes towards obviously the end of December, but there is a period of time in early December that is usually pretty comfortable for city manager interviews. That obviously has to calculate, we need to calculate your schedules and candidates availability and scheduling interviews. But those interviews in Florida, because you've got public meetings laws and public records laws. You, you need to interview obviously in this room or in a room similar to in public. But in order to really get into what candid conversations with the candidates, it's very typical in Florida and almost necessary that you each spend each time with each of the candidates. And usually that takes place before the public interviews. And we, all of that planning and preparation for interviews, we would work with you to create and provide the technical support for you, for that to happen. You would get every bit of information we have on the candidates you would have. There are, and the background work is done by a professional or company that we've been using for a number of years. Some of that information is we can share with you verbally, but would not it's confident, it has things like driver's license and credit history and bank accounts and driving record, date of birth and things like that could be used to to, for identity theft if somebody wanted to misuse it. So at any rate, I know you've got some questions. I want to explain why I wasn't here on the 12th. I understand that we came, got an issue. The reason I wasn't here is because I didn't know I was supposed to. I was, that my presence was desired until about two days before and I had a commitment with another client I couldn't change. So I apologize for that, but I don't think you would want me to have abandoned you if I told you I'd be here and just to another client. I needed to honor that commitment. So I'm pleased with where we are at this point. And I failed to mention that the position is still open. We're still talking to people about it, depending on what happens tonight. I fully intend to do a little bit more network recruiting, if you will. The announcements are still in the International City County Management Association newsletter and they're still, and with the Florida Legal Cities announcement is still there. They're about to expire. But I, again, depending on where we, what I hear from you tonight, we will extend those because I don't want them to disappear. And the advertisement basically says that the job's open till filled. We need to adjust the first review data if we, if we stand any real hope of getting additional people to apply. So I'm available to answer questions.
Understanding that you had a commitment that you were fulfilling, would it not have been to your professional opinion to not have this matter be brought before the commission without an update that is coming from you? And if that is the case, you made a recommendation outside of everything that you said tonight, there was a recommendation made by you.
The recommendation was that if you're seriously interested in your internal candidates, go ahead and hire them. But that obviously wasn't the case, but that's, I had enough reason to think that it might be the case that I brought that up.
And I'm also a little bit now concerned about the the process and I expressed it then, how I feel now it's been tainted and sabotaged for others that may have been the viable candidate. And I'll talk to three Ts, which is transparency, trust and timing, which are essential to me. And if I had to give a grade, I'm an educator, I'll give an F. Because the way that things came to us and the way that it was presented to us, had this been the update that you gave at that appointed time, that could have been a written statement as well, just like you written and wrote and made a recommendation, you could have written and gave us that statement as well. So I'm a little bit confused or I'm a little bit concerned at the way that the process came forward to us and more specifically with the recommendation. Nothing against Mr. Mr. Griffiths, but there were some things that we as a commission, we requested that we did not get. And even in that meeting, it was under the assumption that one of the commissioners made a recommendation. Well, they spoke to you and you said that there were 10 candidates that at that time had applied. Where was those, where did those applications go?
You have them.
We don't have them.
You do.
No, no, no. I'm giving you, we don't have them, which we made the request. And then at that moment, even in that meeting, we asked, where were they? Because we made a request that we get every application that come forward. So I gave you your time and I respect that you give me mine. So again, those are some of the general concerns. That's why I made the request that you be here. And I stayed in that meeting. You won't be able to redeem yourself for me. And I say that simply because as a business person, if you are in charge of a search, a national search, not saying that you should avail yourself, but you should have made a professional recommendation to say, give me the opportunity to appear before the people who hired me. Jonathan didn't hire you. The city attorney didn't hire you. The city commission hired you and you have a due diligence to respond to us to make sure that you carry out what we hired you to do. Recommendations is always fine. We wouldn't spend $11,000 for you not to, at that time, $11,000 for you not to live out the entire contract, but a portion of the contract. So I'm just, I think that if somebody who applied for the job is to go back and do their research on recent activities in Palatka, this is going to be one of the main things that pop up. And of course, they are going to be discouraged. Because again, the way that the process played out.
Commissioner, I was not in control of each of the things that you've mentioned, but beside, but I take responsibility. The company's mind, the contractor's mind. The reality is there were things that I didn't anticipate that happened from the very, very beginning of the search, which delayed the development of a profile. It, and I don't know that that profile was ever approved by this commission. It was sent to you folks. I was working through.
When you say you folks, who are you folks?
The Commissioners.
Commission?
Yes, I sure am.
About staff?
No, well, I don't know. I know that we produced a document that was a draft of, well, first of all, we had meetings that were to be set up with, between me and each of the members of the commission. That never happened. I talked to two of you. And the other, I was to, I was to be here on a day after the evening meeting. And we, if you may recall, had set times for me to contact each of you. I was planning on being there to meet with you, but those meetings never took place. I made my calls and the meetings were never happened. So I wasn't sure when, and at one point I just said to Jonathan, who was my LA's, and I got to draft something and get it to the Commissioners. I did draft that recruitment profile and he apparently was sent to you and for comment. That, that weeks went by and I didn't hear anything back. So he finally, I think, at least he told me that he sent a notice to each of you that if it didn't come back by a certain date, he'd assume it's okay and we finalized it. That happened. At that point, we began the search. But the communication never improved. The I did send, on the 11th, I was asked for all the resumes. This wasn't 10, never 20 at that time. I never sent 10. I was never asked to send 10. And I'm very protective, even though the public records laws in Florida are about as open as you can find any place in the country. I know those documents are public documents. But unless they're requested, I don't send them. If I don't want to discourage candidates from continuing in the process. I never sent 10. But when I was asked to send 21, I did the very next day. It was the 11th of this month. When I was asked for them on the 11th and maybe you got them on the 12th, I don't know, but they were sent immediately. And oddly enough, somebody from, somebody from here called my office today and asked for them. Jonathan, I think. No, that was after, no.
It was not Jonathan.
It was, it was, that's right. It was, I don't know. It was, I don't know, but that's who I sent them to. That's right. Jonathan had already applied.
Anytime before that the commission requested that, either as they come in or we requested the entire profile, because even if you did it on the 11th, our meeting was when?
It was the 12th. I sent them when I was requested to send them. Until I was requested to send them, I didn't want to because it does create an issue when names are made public and candidates start feeling pressure from their present employers that if they're really interested in moving, why don't you just go ahead and leave now? I was requested to. They're yours.
If you were requested to, I'm making a point. So if they were requested by then and we made the request way before, but all of a sudden, even though you make the, you make the professional decision to say you don't want to send, I'm just a tad bit confused.
It was, it was Virginia that asked for them and she told me that the commission wanted them. And I worked for a majority of the commission, not for individual members of it, so I would.
Majority of the commission, you work for all the commission.
I work for the majority. When a majority asks me for something, I get it.
The majority stated that from the very beginning.
That you wanted resumes as they came in?
We did.
I don't think I would have told you. I would have taken this work then.
So my question would be to my fellow Commissioners, how would we proceed? Because again, my three Ts that I stick to, the transparency, the trust and the timing is just not there for me. And I would have a problem with moving forward with someone who's contaminated the process. I'm getting conflicting stories based on what I've heard in previous meetings versus what I've heard for this for what you're standing in front of me. And I, in good conscience and good faith, cannot proceed or would not want to proceed just because of the contaminated process. I will go on record to say I do not have a problem with Mr. Griffith applying. Everybody has the opportunity to change their mind. However, I have a problem with what I've heard in previous meetings versus what I have here today. And had this been the conversation when we availed ourselves, the update that you gave us today, last week, and then you made a recommendation this week, maybe I would be a little bit, but if you, if you're getting my drift, you came with a recommendation, even though you weren't available for whatever reason, which is perfectly fine. But as the professional that you are, I would have requested or made the recommendation instead of you sending a recommendation that you withhold and come before the commission or send your update via email, send your update via some kind of document that allow the playing field to be even. I don't feel, because even in the last meeting I heard where you, there was conversations of going back and telling the candidates that there was an internal person that applied. Now, if that was, if that was, if it was said, it was said out of the person's mouth, but that was said. And I, when I asked that individual to not say anything further. So again, I'm just overly concerned about how this process has been contaminated and I will not say anything further.
Well, point of me going back to candidates and telling them it's an internal candidate, I would never have done that until I met with you. Because if that internal candidate was not of, if I heard from you folks, the commission, that he was not going to be seriously considered, that would have been interesting information for them. They, I don't know how the word got out that he was a candidate and not all, not, I'm not suggesting that it, that everybody knows that. I'm quite concerned at the moment that some of the 21, some of the better qualified of the 21 will withdraw when they find out there's an internal candidate because several of them. I don't know how, the better qualified of the 21. I'm not better qualified than Jonathan, but I'm not making that statement at all. What I'm saying is that there are some of the 21s that are better qualified than others. Those are the ones that I don't want to have bail. And I needed to know from you folks what the situation with Jonathan is before I could move forward with any sense of integrity in terms of the candidates. They will want to know that.
What would be the recommendation to move forward to give a level playing field? Not to discredit the application or the desire for Mr. Griffith, but to make sure that we have a due diligence to the others that have applied to give them the same access or give them the same opportunity at this shot as our city manager candidate?
Yeah, I think you need to move promptly and take the procedural path that has been laid out by Mr. Slaven with sending out the questionnaire to the candidates that you think are the most qualified. Get those responses back in a short period of time and from those, select the ones that you want to interview.
I will also, I will add that I'm not unwilling to withdraw from the process myself, but it's not going to help move the process forward in a timely way if I do.
I'd like to hear you, Mayor.
Really, by procedure, I do go last in terms of comments. I do.
Only thing you do is break a tie.
I will gladly make my comment or statement, but I want to make sure you all have your opportunity. And that is what I'm doing. Do you have? Commissioner Borm.
It's no different than what I said the last time. I felt that the process was contaminated and I'm not comfortable with continuing with Slaven as being our recruitment. I'm not comfortable with continuing with Slaven as being um our recruitment firm. I mean, I know it might delay things a lot more, but based on just all of the interactions, transactions. And different things of that nature. This stuff is all on public meetings and for the process to be. Contaminated per se, because it is contaminated based on a lot of the actions that have, have. That I, at least came, that I understand. And uh you was probably speaking about me, Mr. Slaven, when you said that, or Commissioner, you couldn't, uh, you didn't meet with. You didn't meet with me because for one, you missed my meeting um that we, we were over at the annex, who was over at the annex. And uh you, you missed my meeting that you said we won't give you 30 minutes to complete. Uh, you finished up earlier and I, I was waiting for you to, to, to circle back around and, and, and finish up with me and then. So we did not meet that day. Cause you, you was, you was, you was, you was trying to.
I remember that now.
Okay. And then the other piece that you called me um uh it when I was unavailable. To meet with you, you, um, there was a, there was a call that you, you made to me that we were supposed to make. And I didn't get a call at that time. So that was another meeting that I missed, but then you tried to call back after that. A third, there was a second call that I was just. Just totally out of tune in term, in terms of trying to even communicate with you further about the candidate role. So yeah, that was me that we just never could hook up because you missed appointment with.
I don't remember why that happened, but I certainly wasn't intentional if I had, if I know.
I said you missed it twice.
Yeah, I could have. I missed it once. How do we call it, walking over there to meet with you?
Right, yes, sir. All right, and uh again, we, the commission did ask for a few things that we um, we never received. That, that all of the, it was, it was a part of the criteria.
That was.
All of the resumes that for people who um apply for the positions. We, that was part of the criteria that we asked for and we just never got those. In addition to how you handle it, I am not comfortable with moving forward.
Fine.
And there's nothing against Jonathan for applying. Uh, every, anybody can apply. I just, I just got a problem with the, the way this whole thing.
I understand, I'm not, I understand.
I have concerns um on both sides about how the processes work too, not. I, I think there's been a lot of miscommunication, misinformation and lack of quality in some cases. Um, I know that you sent all the resumes and I appreciate that to Ms. Jones. Um, I think that again, Jonathan did, once he applied, distance himself from this process as far as being the liaison. And I believe that to be true. However, all that is said and done, um, people don't trust that that happened and that becomes problematic. I think Jonathan, yeah, as we all said, has every right to apply and should have applied when he decided to do so, because people do change their minds. Um, I also from. Hiring many people in the past do know that people in their current job. Do like to know if there's an internal candidate and base the decision about whether to continue in that process or not on that, because they don't want to discover. Or find out that that person may be hired and they will lose their job because their um current employee discovers that. So sometimes it is standard practice to disclose that. I'm not saying this happened here and it certainly wasn't from, I think, any employee here. I'm not sure how that was disclosed. None of us seem to know that. Um, but that isn't unusual for people to find out. This is a small community um where it gets up. Anyway, um, with all that said, things have not gone as smoothly as we like. I personally thought we could have done this in a different way to begin with, but here we are. So how do we want to proceed? I understand Commissioner Campbell, I mean Commissioner Campbell, I'm sorry, Commissioner Borm. Is saying that he would not like to continue, continue with Mr. Slaven's company. Commissioner Campbell?
Let me ask this question and it's directed to legal. Um, what would be? I guess for lack of better words, a penalty if we were to terminate the contract?
I'll, I'll need to review the contract terms again.
I, I have a comment. Yeah. Under section, the first page of the contract, item F. Um, either party may terminate this agreement in whole or in part and giving of 10 days written notice to either party, provided that one of the following stipulations. Are satisfied. Number one, if termination is affected by the client, client will pay the contractor for all. Um, for work performed through or including the date of termination or two. If termination is affected by the contractor, the contractor will complete the work for all compensation received and issue a final invoice for services. Performed through and including the date of termination with the invoice shall be paid by the client within 30 days.
We do know that um the consulting firm has been paid 11,000 to date. Um, obviously there's going to be additional time and travel expenses incurred with this particular hearing, so I don't know.
That's all of it. That would be the only, uh.
Well, there's a um cap on the expenses. I don't think we're anywhere near it, but.
Yeah, what, what do we, yeah. What about the contract performance? I mean, we, we didn't, we didn't get, we didn't get anything for the. What we paid.
Well, you had 21 applicants.
I know, uh, we got 21 applicants.
And Ms. Jones currently has them in her office, correct? The resume section said, not the applicants. Okay, I'm just saying that.
I just have a problem, even though that was a request that we made, then we still haven't received anything. So, um. You mentioned that you're willing to withdraw from the process. Is that something that you would take in consideration?
According to the contract, yes. In fact, you know, I've, I've, I can't work for you if you don't want me to work for you, so.
Well, I don't trust you.
Well, and you know, the feeling may feel a little bit mutual, but the reality is um. Uh, I, I think we'll just honor the contract and I'll go away and. Uh, I will notify the candidates who've uh applied that I'm no longer involved and if they're interested in the job to contact the city directly or do something.
Mayor Correa, um, I would actually, and I'm sorry to do this, but I would ask for a recess because. I've got the front desk telling me Commissioner McCaskill's trying to zoom in and she can't. So if I have opportunity to try to, well, we're already, or either, what would you like me to tell Commissioner McCaskill?
What is, she can, she, what, she can't log on?
Uh, uh, she says she can. I'm happy to connect, communicate with her and try to find out why she can't.
Well, we're at 10 o'clock now and we're in the middle of this conversation. I don't want to be rude to.
She's not calling.
Commissioner McCaskill, but I think we just have to keep going here.
I mean, she can communicate and try to get her own. Can she not phone in? Like, is that not?
Can I ask somebody to take the minute so that I can step away and answer her phone call?
I don't know. Who, who can you ask to do that is the question in my mind. Can somebody else take her phone call?
Can you just hold on, please?
Can you not put her on speaker?
I mean, I can try. I mean, I can connect you with the speaker phone if they'll allow that, but I just was trying to get them to give me a few minutes to do it. Okay, just hold on.
What, what are we doing now? Excuse me?
What are we doing is what we didn't want to do. We wanted to continue and have her give the opportunity.
Don't, at this point, at this juncture, I think we just need to continue, everybody's sake here.
So what you're saying, Mr. Slaven, that you are already paid what you are due other than this trip?
Other than for the, I don't know, uh, we, we, yeah, the professional fees have been paid. I don't know about the expenses, so. Two of the, the third one is um, is uh after, at the interviews. And the fourth one is, yeah, so we're not going to do the interviews. Just be the expenses.
Yeah, because according to the fees, he shouldn't, I don't calculate eight, uh, 11,000 dollars. So. Two reports. Yeah, yeah, but it, but. Because the fee says that there's some deliverables. Okay, so we get paid for the deliverables, which.
First.
I can shoot. I think we just have to move on.
Yeah, yes.
Let's just get out of there.
I certainly did.
So some of that's considered screening.
No, I reviewed them and I have a list of uh of, of candidates who meet the criteria. And I.
Okay, we have that.
Mr. McCaskill, can you turn your YouTube off? Okay, because we're hearing your YouTube feedback.
My apologies for the technical difficulty. I think we just need to hang up. Thank you. It's just not going to work, so. It's, yeah, it's, we just need to.
So, it's some clarification. Is it the commission's um intent to terminate the contract effective today?
Let's please stop.
Commissioner McCaskill asked him a question.
I really need you to be taking a minute. Okay, um, let's clean this up for the record, please.
Commissioner McCaskill asked a question, so.
Sorry, I was not hearing.
I asked a question with regards to the, what would be the cause? I mean, what would be the stipulations if we were to terminate the contract with Mr. Slaven? And it was clearly identified that you walked through, but then I also followed up with a question that he stated earlier before I made. Asked the question that he was willing to remove himself from. The equation.
Okay, so for, for clarity and transparency, so all parties are understanding what is on the table. When you say walk away.
Under the provision of the, the contract, separation.
I don't care. I, I'll just be done.
Okay, but. I, I need to understand um if that means you are no longer expecting any, any payment from the city.
Expect to be paid, paid the 11,000, which I already have, plus expenses for this trip.
For this trip, okay.
So that's the additional cost. So yes, we don't know what that exactly is yet.
Uh, no, uh, we don't know what it is.
I, I get it. No, I understand. I'm just, again, clarifying points. Commissioner.
So, so, so in terms. So in the, in the contract performance, we, do we have any, anything in there as it relates to the product? The product that we, 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 we are getting from him in addition to if he does uh get a chance to. Be paid for the, the 11,000 dollars and not have to return any of that. Um, the other piece i- in my mind would be for every interview or whatever you've done, that need to be turned over to the city. For all the interactions with the. Uh, cut, whatever, your, your ratings and everything, if you can turn those over to the city, because that's what we'll be paying for.
This is my um. Oh, um, um, notes based on the uh. Um, screening of the candidates according to the uh, to the, to the requirements that are on, on that profile. And also have um a draft of that questionnaire I referred to, which you may find useful if you want. The, and the resumes, what you would have gotten uh, uh, is a um. Uh, report that basically has this information and it has the uh, the um. Resumes, the cover letters, the questionnaire, which we didn't, uh, candidates haven't gotten yet. And the summary of, well, it would have, and that's what you have gotten at this point in the process. At that point, uh, had it happened in that uh normal manner, I would have asked you, based on that information, which of the people. Whose resumes and background work are and uh um uh supplemental questionnaires you're interested in. At that point, we would have moved forward towards the, the interviews uh and at that point, I would have built you the third. So what you didn't get is a bound report that has the same information basically that, that you have, uh, with the exception that it had some, um. It would have had some. Uh, well, it would have, it would have had a, a list of um, of um questions that you could ask. It would have had. Oh, uh, uh, oh, some tools on, that's what I'm missing. Some tools in the back of the book that will allow you to have rate of the candidates, one to however many there were. And that, then we would have added, I would have asked each of the five of you to do that. And then we would have tallied them and the uh ones that got the best score, that, uh, it's like golf. You, you ranked them one to five, if there were five, and one would be the best score, five would be the highest score. We would, uh, I would tabulate those rankings and tell you folks what the, the group, the um. Uh, tally, what that tally resulted in. Usually that process results in not determining who you're going to hire by any means, but it will determine. Who you're not interested in. So you would have gotten that. It's all, but that's.
I'm just, we would have got, we would have got, would have gotten is, would have gotten us here.
Uh, very frankly, until I was um comfortable that there was an actual job to be filled. Uh, and that would have meant having, um, that wasn't a recommendation I necessarily uh recommended. There were some options on the, uh, on that uh. Letter I sent you. One of them was that uh if you chose to go ahead and hire the internal candidate, that I could recommend him. Because he met the criteria and I also suggested that we do background work on him, which we have begun to do.
Who else? In addition to who else?
Him, because he's.
So you only had one candidate that you were going to do back.
That's because I was, that point didn't know that you were interested in who you were interested in, but I suspected that you were interested in him.
But you didn't hear that from us. You had to get it from somebody though, right? Who was that?
Well.
Thank you.
Did you do any, any, any in-person interviews with anybody?
I did, I did telephone interviews with several of them to recruit them and to find out at that point whether or not they met the criteria.
Right, but then they, you had the people to fill out these surveys, this.
No, I had, that would be the next step. If you told me that you were interested in these folks, that would have been what I do, what I would be doing now.
No in-person, all just phones.
So, uh, no in-person, um, phone calls. Oh, the other thing I would have done is Google. And I.
Then you made a recommendation to make a, um, you made a recommendation to in, to hire intern?
No, not to hire, but to consider that. And if you did and considered it and hired him, then it would have relieved um us of a uh obligation to let folks. Prepare people to be interviewed uh for a job that had already been filled, so.
Thank you, Jonathan. A disservice, I think, to the process in general. Um, just because of what you're telling me, what you would have done, what we would have gotten. I think that, again, the, the process is overly tainted. And the more that you talk, the more you're digging yourself in a hole that you won't be able to get out of. Um, I think that we, as a commission, I make the recommendation that we terminate.
Second.
What, please, one minute, let him finish.
I make the motion that we terminate services. We thank you for your consideration. We thank you for everything that you have done. And we would gladly pay you for what it was that you're, to your expenses, but I wish to terminate this so that we can go home.
Thank you.
Second, that motion.
Second, all in favor, uh, any opposition?
Commissioner McCaskill's now via the Zoom. Are we recording her vote? And I need to know what her vote is.
I. I don't think at this point, no. Yeah, she's not listed as.
Hi.
And we do have another agenda item.
I'm in favor.
Emergency.
I'm in favor.
Okay, we have a motionist. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? A second, all in favor? I, any opposition? Okay, we have unanimous. We have a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's me, it's me. You have made a motion to accept the side and item, I'm sorry, I think it's 14. It looks like 13 on my side, but. Authorize, authorizing resolution 2023 R6362, but there hasn't been any discussion.
I thought, we talked about the emergency item and that's my fault.
And it's regarding the red light camera.
And I thought that's what we just voted on, but no, okay. We voted on terminating contract, terminating contract, okay. I, I was a little confused.
No, we just voted on seven, number 14.
As an emergency item.
That's what I, okay.
But that doesn't mean.
That doesn't mean we adopted it. That doesn't mean we adopted it. I'm sorry, it's late for everybody, okay.
Sunny, do you want to go?
Sunny, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Polack, authorizing the use of red light camera funds for antivirus software. Authorizing a fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget transfer and providing for scrivener's errors. And I know we're probably tired of Zoom, but I would mention that the city's consultant, Britt McFatter, is on the line.
Good evening, can you all hear me?
Does anybody have any questions of the gentleman on the line? I take that as a no. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposition? Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you. You're going to discuss where we're going with this job search. Are we going to put it back out on the street? Is that, it's still open, first of all. Are we going to seek?
Cancel, I'm guessing.
Are we going to seek? I'll seek the recommendation of the attorney. To give us what we, I mean, we know it's going to have to go back out there. But what is it that there are some things that he's going to have to do to formally close out? But, I mean, we have the applications we have. Are we looking to do in-house? Are we looking to have another or taking to consideration the second person who applied or was considered?
So Mr. Slaven did indicate that he was going to notify the candidates to date that he was no longer going to be working on this. But we do, I mean, that is, his work product is those twenty-one resumes, so I would suggest perhaps starting there.
Start over, start, start the process over.
Why would we start over if it's his work product? We just paid him eleven thousand dollars. That's our, those are our candidates. So I would suggest that we, we take those twenty-one or nineteen or how many ever. And we can move forward with those. Do we need to do it from internal and then we can continue to search for another search form or whatever the commission. Suggest, but I just surely don't want to just trash those. That'll be sunk cost.
I, I would think we would start internal with going through these twenty-one to see.
I would make the recommendation that we send a formal letter to the candidate stating that we are now taking over. That we are in the process of formulating a process that would allow us to come in and continue where Mr. Slaven has stopped. And that gives us the opportunity to let staff, and I would actually delegate between, not delegate. I will make the recommendation that the city attorney and HR. Lead discharge, at least making that initial contact with them, just to let them know. You know, that we are, it's a change of hands and we are looking to continue. I just want it, when I say, the reason I want to bring, I just want to make sure that when we make contact, that the, the legals, from the legal standpoint, that everything is covered. And then that'll give us the opportunity within the next few fleeting days to kind of come up with a ways that we want to move forward.
Understood. Commissioner Borm.
Yeah, in, in addition to that, also, I, I think we need to reach out to the floor legal cities. To maybe see and let them know where we are as well in terms of, and seeing how they could probably provide any assistance as well.
I would like to see all resumes. I would like to have copy of all resumes, paper copy, please. As we requested at the beginning, so there's twenty-one.
Yeah.
I would like to see all twenty-one of them.
We never got them.
Is it the? Or electronic copies? Because I, once I spoke last commission meeting and informed you all that I had them. I never had a request except for Commissioner Jones to send electronic copies, which he was unable to open and he did view them. So if you would like me to, I can, I'll be more than willing to go in and make paper copies and. Make sure the. Electronic, Commissioner Borm.
I'll, I'll, I'll do either, either one is.
Okay.
As long, as long as I'm able to see it.
But you would like a paper copy, is that correct, Commissioner Jones?
I like both. It's not going to cost you.
Any further comments in terms of moving forward? Ms. Jones, you know, I told you when I'll get mine.
Commissioner McCaskill's trying to talk, but I do not hear her.
I just told Ms. Jones that we've already discussed.
And again, my apologies, but no. I'm doing a motion to adjourn? Okay, we can do a comment, I guess, go ahead.
This is one of the things that I, I, I thought that was important and it got cut out of budget. An IT. Personal network, we had Brian McCann, who sent me an email regarding. That the email, his email was potentially hacked, it had titled my name. As part of the communication, sending it to him and it had the mayor. Signed it, I mean, with name, well, not name, but the title at the bottom of the email, so. We have a, a, a Microsoft change server here. So I'm going to forward this information over, so we need to be able to get these things looked at and taken care of. And I've been talking about this forever and a day and now things are. Coming to fruition in terms of, we don't have the technical expertise or support for the city. What would happen if the city lost its systems? The things, ADG, all of these things that the city need to run by. Now, I'm going to forward this stuff over, but Brian McCann sent me a text. That had, and I thought I had forwarded that information on. We, we got to make sure that we, 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 we do this, do these things right. Those, that, that position got cut out the budget. We don't have no IT support here, other than what external company provide to us. So that's, that's, I'm, I'm just.
Can we make that an agenda item? Because I think.
Yes.
More specific with that being out, with it being out in the forefront of YouTube and all of that kind of stuff. It may increase the risk of people trying to hack, so I would definitely want us to have a conversation, in-depth conversation, so thank you for bringing it up.
Appreciate it.
Now, motion to adjourn.